Good evening. Planning Board is now in session. Before we get to our first item on the agenda, we're going to turn the attention over to Mrs. Houlihan. I mean, Mrs. Luttrell.
Yeah, I just wanted to do a quick commercial. The Master Plan Committee, which is redoing the master plan for the town, is holding a community visioning session on November 7th at Trotter from 6:00 to 9:00 to get ideas from the community of what they would like to see in the town in the next decade or two.
Sounds like the same path we took for the previous update of the master plan. What date, what was that date again?
November 7th.
And where was it?
Trotter Middle School.
And the time?
6:00 to 9:00 PM.
Thank you. Okay, first item on the agenda is public hearing, 2 East Main Street, major site plan approval. This public hearing is continued from July 22nd, August 5th, August 26th, September 9th. We also have the public hearing for 2 East Main Street, special permit Village Business District. This is continued from July 22nd, August 5th, August 26th, and September 9th. We'll ask the town planner to give us the update.
Okay, since the last meeting on September 9th, the planning board had tasked me to submit a legal opinion request to Town Council regarding some feedback on business village district jurisdiction. We received feedback from Town Council on September 18th. The day before that, September 19th, Peter Bemis with Engineering Design Consultants made a submission with updated architectural plans, also indicating to us that he would still be relying on the previous submission for site plans. And I believe any changes that come about today, you'd incorporate into final plans. The plans, architectural plans were sent to Fosson O'Neil as a courtesy. They're, they've completed their review to this date. Also, I'd like to point out that Jesse Stein has submitted Mullins forms for his absence at the prior meeting. Draft decisions were prepared and sent to Town Council and sent to Mr. Bemis, as well as the planning board. We tried to get those done early so that if there were any changes, we could incorporate them quickly. And that brings us to tonight. So on the table for this evening are the updated architectural. I did also receive a turning template plan showing truck turning radius into and out of the 2 East Main Street site for the file. And that's what I have.
Very good.
Oh, one more thing. I'm sorry. My apologies. As far as town department comments. I received an email this afternoon from Open Space Preservation Committee with some comments. "The Open Space Preservation Commission discussed the landscaping for 2 East Main Street at their meeting on September 17th and recommend that all natives be used in the landscaping. We've done some research already and continue to refine specific plant recommendations, suitable replacements to non-native plants proposed. We've already found many nature, native flowers that are appropriate instead of the Stella Dora, Dora lilies, for example. We meet again on the 26th for further discussion and we'll have an official letter after that meeting." I also just want to let you know that on September 12th, I sent an email to the Economic Development Coordinator to let, asking her to let the EDC, the committee itself, know that the meeting was continued to this evening and if they had any feedback on the project. And those are the only items that I had to add.
Thank you. Mr. Stein.
I just want to go on record stating that I reviewed the materials from the previous hearing on this on September 9th and reviewed the draft minutes and filed the Mullins form, as Karina said.
Thank you. Mr. Bemis, good evening. Welcome back.
Thank you.
You're on.
Okay, great. So as Karina said, the site plan set is what you had seen at the last meeting. It was vetted through the Fosson O'Neil review. And they have no further comments and I have no further presentation with the plans. I believe that they are properly prepared and in compliance with the necessary requirements. The architectural plan is an update from the previous plan. This is the architect that I have working with, the proposed occupant for the building. So I'm hopeful that we're getting closer to where we want to be with this for them, their sake too. So the refinements were the identification of materials throughout on all four sides of the building. We identified where a building sign would be located and the dimensions on the third floor, what its walk-up would be. It's a fairly limited space. And then there's a floor plan that accompanied that. And you'll note that they're sealed by licensed architect Massachusetts. So I really don't have anything else to present. I mean, I believe we're in full compliance with the requirements for site plan review. I believe we're in full compliance with the requirements for Village Business District. I outlined those six Village Business District items at the last meeting. I can go through them again, but again, I don't see where we don't comply with all provisions for the local bylaw. So I look forward to your support. And I know we have a draft decision, so I could just focus the time on that unless there's something else you need me to address.
Okay, we'll open up to the board. Mr. Mills.
Thank you for coming in again. And for the plans, just to confirm that, so the, the sign, in general, there's only one sign?
There's the provision, the way the draft decision is written, I mean, we have, we have the ability to put more signage here because it's going to be a single tenant and it just seemed like this was the right scale. That's why I identified the sign there. You know, if they want to do something different, we'd come back and present it to the board for their review. But I believe it's, again, in keeping with what's been done in the past on other buildings and I really don't have a way of defining it any further. I know on the prints, for some reason, the engineering plotter didn't see the XYZ corp, but your PDF did. So it printed black, so I apologize for that. I don't know why. Other than it's something to do probably with the metric of that sign space in, in the program when we print it in PDF.
So I have no other questions.
Thank you. Mr. Stein.
So did the Open Space Commission have a chance to review the plantings? And did you guys file a comment? Because was that in this packet or?
I read an email that was submitted today
Oh, thank you.
that they were going to provide a letter in the future.
Would you like me to say something more?
Yeah.
Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission. We did have a preliminary review and one of the things is, I did mention at the last meeting that I was speaking as an individual because we hadn't met. The commission's recommendation is to look at all native species. We didn't have time to completely do that in my conversation earlier at the planning board. We had, I had mentioned that bush honeysuckle is a native shrub that, you know, would be a great replacement. That zizia is a plant. Since then, we have reached out to other people in the, in the business and came up with a lot of plants that are great native species replacements for the non-native lily. And we will be submitting a letter after our meeting this Thursday. But we didn't see new plans, but we stay committed to our recommendation. And we're fully aware that we are an advisory commission only and that the bylaw just strongly encourages native plantings, but that this is a special permit and the planning board has great ability to make requirements that are in the best interest of the town. Our recommendations are science-based. For landscaping that can be beautiful, we believe that the towns, landscaping bylaws aren't about putting in gardens, but for the benefit of the townspeople and future generations in addition to looking nice. And I believe there are many native plants that can satisfy that. And we'll have an official letter after Thursday, which didn't seem to be untimely because there wasn't a new landscaping plan. We had expected to see at least some of the natives' disgust in a new plan. So, thank you.
You have any response?
Yeah, so my only response is the fact that, that there's probably only a few properties in downtown that actually have a front yard that they're trying to beautify like we are here. There's a couple with just grass. We could have just done grass, but we didn't want to do that. We put a landscaping bed in deliberately. And I mean, I picked perennials that I thought would work and we just wanted to add some color. So if there's a way to do it with a not, with a native, I'm fine with it. But, but my point would be, is that I just don't want to be hamstrung so I'm creating something that doesn't look attractive.
Well, back to, back to your point that we're not forcing beautification of other properties. You're the, we are, you're the one who's in front of us and those properties aren't.
Hopefully, I'm going to make a, no, no, I'm saying, but hopefully I make a difference with this.
All, anybody doing site plan would be facing the same.
I understand. My, my point is, is that I have, I think probably about 85% of the plants here, if not 90%, were natives. It's just these few perennials that we, we have here that, again, we're just trying to make an impact with what we're doing at the front of the building. I'm more than willing to do that, but I'm, all I'm saying is that a non-native, one non-native plant isn't going to spoil that whole area. And that's the only point that I'm making, is that there should be some give and take with this. I've done a majority of the plants being native and I would hope that we could do a few that aren't. They're still going to attract the same insect populations and they're not going to violate that ability to do that. And I, and I only have a small patch of ground here that I can do this in effectively. And we, and we've actually proposed everything else around it, with the exception of those arborvitae's in the back. But I think that that plant is the appropriate plant, and I think other folks have said it too, is that it's deer resistant. So that's the one thing that I've stated. I provided you pictures with what, what happens with the native species versus the non-native species. And I've really made a commitment to my abutter, to the north here, that I would have a screen there. And I want, I want to be able to honor that. And she doesn't attend the meetings any longer because I gave her that commitment. So I know she's been on board with my proposal for some time now. So that's really what we're talking about, is a few of those flowers that we put in there aren't native. And if, and if, and if the Open Space Committee gives me one that's equal and will achieve the same result and it's not too tall and it's not too small, I'm game. I'll do it.
So you'd be okay with some, some?
Some guidance and, and some language, right. But have some flexibility.
Some language that conditions for cooperation?
Sure.
And adherence to the Open Space Commission's.
All I wanted to do is get us a, a plant that had color, that I know its scale and scope and its habit. Because I know what that plant will do. It's very effective. And it's overused, I've been told. But I'm only have a small little patch of land right here I'm going to do it in.
So I read, I read the minutes and I read the materials, but could you just address the height of the building issue and your?
Well, we took, okay, I can go back to that too, sure. So we took out the, the dormers in the front. All I carried was that small gable where we have the clock. Because that was one of the comments. It was relative. They thought the scale was too tall. You know, my point is, is that this is right on target with all those homes that are already going up and down Main Street and East Main Street. And if we were considering scale and scope, I mean, if we just look outside at the church right outside the door, that's some 50-odd feet right at the street line, very close. This isn't anything compared to that. Not to say this is a church. I'm just saying, scale and scope, this is online with what's already on the street. And it's not, we don't stand outside here and find that that church is impacting. I don't think this building is going to be impacting in any way.
So just backing up, can you say really specifically where you reduce the elevation of the building?
We took out those dormers.
Okay.
And we carried that, that minimum roof pitch back. That's, that's all we've done. It's, it's an eight-pitch roof. There are, there are probably 10 and 12 pitch roofs on Main Street as you go from, away from this area. That's only an eight-pitch roof. It's not that steep.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mrs. Luttrell.
Back to the natives. At our first meeting, you said that you would be willing to do the natives except for the arborvitae. So we compromised on the arborvitae. I was okay with that. But then other non-natives are showing up.
I'm still not saying that I won't do them. I'm just concerned that the plant that I've selected, if there's a native that will have the same habit, the same appearance, and the same context as that plant, I'm in. But if I cannot find that plant, or, or one's been suggested to us, I would like the ability to plant that. Because I know it will work, it's effective, and it, and it will look great all summer long. That's what's great about that plant. I don't want something that's just going to flower for a week for a certain butterfly that maybe it doesn't come to Southborough, or maybe it can be entertained at another site. I just don't want my site to have to entertain that butterfly, that's all. That's my point. I'm trying.
All, all sites should entertain the butterflies. The, the reason is to mitigate for what we've done to our environment.
I don't disagree. And I'm, but I'm not the one who, who did all of that violation.
Well, no, but so, so moving forward, we're trying to mitigate for that. All right. What is Class B?
That is a zoning, excuse me, that's a building code provision and that's what classifies the building.
So is that Group B under the building code? Which could be an airport, car wash, a car, a dog kennel?
Again, that's just the way the architect described it.
Can it say?
He's a license, I'm not a licensed architect. I hired a licensed architect to prepare the plans and that's the use code. I'm, identified what it is. It's an office building. It's in all of the plans. It's in all the applications. Karina, the way she drafted the decision, it says it explicitly. If this, if this user group that, that I've been talking to doesn't go forward, it's going to be something else. Because I don't think anyone else is going to run down and want to be in my 6,671 square foot building. I hope that they do, because it's going to be an office building. That's what they want. That's what they need. But that's the use category per building code.
Okay. So that, so, but those uses would not be compatible. The other uses wouldn't?
Again, it's, it's the way you design the building. It's the way you build the building. You have to meet that code provision. So that's why it's there.
So on the one hand, I'd like to see this parcel developed. It's been an eyesore for far too long. On the other hand, I don't think it is currently in harmony with the intent and purpose of the bylaw. I think it's too big. I think it overwhelms the site.
Exactly what zoning allows. It could allow a bigger building. I'm just saying, I'm, I'm following the, the bylaw. And this bylaw's been in place for a long time. This didn't just happen last year, 10 years ago, 20 years ago. It's been this way for probably 40 years.
Correct. And the, but the special permit looks at each particular site. And I'm hung up on the special permit, 174-9A1 location B. Providing adequate water and drainage for this location should impose no special public problems. And we've heard consistently from abutters that there's a?
Not one bit of engineering work, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but not one bit of engineering work has been brought to refute.
Could I finish my sentence, please?
Okay. I'm sorry, but I, it's just coming tonight. I'm disappointed.
We've heard from many abutters that there's major drainage concerns there. And I think that a smaller building with less impervious surface would lessen that concern. And according to the special permit, the special permit granting authority may impose conditions, limitations, and safeguards. No special permit shall issue except upon the general findings the use sought. Its characteristics shall be in harmony with the intent and purpose of this chapter. And my last question, what is the reason for the waiver on the parking space size? The waiver request doesn't state a reason.
Because it's a uniform parking. You do allow 25% for the reduction of the employee parking provision. And you allow 15% for the customer provision. So 40% of the parking spaces, and I have looked at other sites that you've allowed to go down 40%. You yourself had described what's going on at the medical center with the parking spaces. So you do allow them to go down and it's not even a, a request. I can just do it. I don't want to do it. I don't want to have un-uniform parking spaces. So I asked that the board grant a waiver to go from nine and a half to nine and have a uniform parking space here. If you don't offer that, I get the same number of parking spaces. Frankly, I'd probably get one more if I go down to the smaller size. My point would be, to what end? Then I'm going to go mark spaces and say, this is a compact one and this is a full-size one. And again, I don't see that happening either throughout town. So that's why I said, keep it uniform. There are plenty of sites in town right now with nine-foot parking spaces or smaller. And that's all that I asked for. So one way or another, I get to the same place at the end of the day. I just think it would be a much nicer looking site to have one parking space size here. A nine-foot parking space is more than enough for today's cars. So that's it. That's why I want it. And I explained that at the meeting and I provided a letter asking for the waiver.
The waiver didn't, the waiver just asked for a waiver. Didn't explain.
But I explained it at the meeting. I said that I could, I can make this change. I did not want to make the change. I would rather have uniform parking spaces throughout the site versus what other sites have done, but they don't designate them as compact. So they don't even tell you. You just, you drive up to it and it's small. As you said, you have a hard time getting out of your doors. Because some of those are even smaller than eight feet, which you do allow. They're even smaller than that, because I checked. But that's okay. That's what's happening at some other site. It's not my site. At my site, I asked for nine-foot, uniform parking spaces. And I hope the board would support that. And if you don't, then I'm going to use the provision that's in the zoning bylaw that allows 25% and 15%. So essentially 40% of the parking spaces can be smaller.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Houlihan.
Thank you. I had comments similar. So I am kind of on the fence as well, I think from my perspective. I, it is an eyesore, the empty land there. So to have something there, I think this is not new for you. I've expressed my concern around the, the breadth and size of the building on that lot. And I appreciate that it fits all the conformity of the zoning law. I think it's just, again, it's the ability within a special permit in the business district for us to really contemplate how this building meets with the criteria and the harmony of the business district. And I, again, feel like it's just very large and overwhelming for the site. Sitting so front, sitting right on the line, the property lines. That's really my only comment.
But that's what the zoning dictates that we do. We're not to put the parking in the front. As I said to you, I could take this building and I could flip it back to the backside and put all the parking in the front. Then the, then the argument would be, you have all this parking in the front. We don't want that look. Because that's, it says that right in the bylaw. Do not do that. So if I came in with that, it would probably feel a lot better because the building's far, further away. But it's wrong. It's totally wrong. And that's, and so, so when the other sites get redeveloped in, in the, in the district, understand. When, when, when the medical center, well, not the medical center, was it? Dr. Halcy's old building, I don't even know if it's still his or not. But that building there, one day when it gets redeveloped, it's going to want that building to be forward and the parking in the back. So, so the bylaw right now is telling me to do that. For 40-some-odd-plus years, it's said that. And no one has, no one's come forward and changed that. So I guess what I'm getting at is that I've invested a great deal of time and money, purchased the property, done all of my work and my homework to make sure that this was right. And no one has come in here and produced one bit of evidence to say why it's wrong. And, and, and this is the scale, scope, and the zoning. And all I'm saying is, I need, I need four people to vote for this. I came in with this project. The alternative project that I had was- that I had was a two-story building, but the component that was on the second floor, people had a problem with that. That's the only way the scale of this building can come down, is that the second floor just be a different use. It can't be an office use, because it's going to be ineffective. No one's going to want it. So, it has to be a different use. And then there was opposition to that when I was at the zoning board of appeals by members of this board. So, I deliberately did not come in with that proposal. I've come in with something that works. I have a company that wants to be here. This is the minimum square footage. They wanted 7,000 square feet. So, I can't make the building a bit smaller, or it doesn't happen. So, that's where I'm at. So, it either goes forward the way it is, I can't make it any smaller, or it's going to be a different use. And I'm sorry. And that use probably will be offensive to some of these board members, and that's where we're going to be. But I can't ask, I'm not going to ask for a continuance. I'm, I, I have to get a decision this evening, because I'm moving forward one way or another. It's either this project, or it's the other project that I had. That's it.
Thank you.
I can't sell it to someone else, because if I'm not getting approval, and I'm the guy that lives in town, and I'm the guy that works in town, if I can't get it, who's going to come here and want to do it? No one. Thank you.
Mr. Stein.
So, if the group does not proceed, it will be something else?
If, oh, if the company, I have a company that we're, we're, we're talking to, and we're putting together pricing on this proposal, just as you see it right now.
Okay. And if they don't move forward, your backup plan is?
I'm going to come back with my other proposal, because that's the only thing that I can do, that I know will work financially. It does work. I already had, I've had a lender look at it. They're willing to finance it. I'm ready to go with that project. I was concerned about putting that project forward and not getting the votes that I needed.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to get something a little bit more concrete about what other options you have.
I, it was a publicly submitted proposal. It was at the zoning board of appeals. They granted me approval for it. I have that approval. I gave it, I gave you a copy of it when I started this process.
Okay.
There's a plan here dated September 13th, and it shows that turning radius, the turning, but it seems to show the fire truck going past the site and then backing in.
Well, that's one turning movement, or it comes in the other way, and it backs, it goes back out. It follows the same pathway, depending on which perspective you want to take. We just figured the fire engine was going to come from the center of town, and it was going to come down, into the street, and enter into the site.
So, is there a reason why you didn't show the both turns?
It does the same thing, so it doesn't matter. It's going to do the same thing.
I, I, I don't think you're right with that.
I know for a fact it's going to follow the same path.
Well, if the vehicle was being steered by the front tires going forward, it follows one path. If a vehicle is going backwards, it's being steered by what then would be the back tires-
But the program-
...the wheels would turn, would, would take a different path.
The program is giving you the perspective of its entry and exit. It's a, it's a program that's written to give you both perspectives, so that's the, that's its travel path.
I respectfully don't buy that.
I remember the fire department-
So, let's go to the size of the building. You've explained to us that it can't get any, this, this building, it's either this building, or you're going to a different project. So, I want to ask the board, there's been consistent disagreement with the size of the building. So, what, what would you suggest? Would you suggest that the roof be flat, still, or a, a, a different slope on the roof? Would you want it to be a foot shorter in height, a foot less in length and width, or are we talking about a one-story building with a flat roof, or something in between? So, are we, in fairness to Mr. Bemis, we should, we're, we're objecting to the size of the building, but to what extent? So, I guess we should air that out and just get, get the opinions. If you don't like the size of this building, what size would be acceptable? Mrs. Holian.
So, I guess it comes down to that corner and the radius turn, and the, the kind of looming building right on the property line. And so, from my perspective, is there any way to move it back from the, the property line, set it back at all, and have the ability for, I understand cars would come up and be able to, to turn at the stop sign. My worry is more around safety and just the, one on that corner, and then the, the largeness of the building. So, my own perspective is that if it's set back a little bit, it gives a, a little broader view when you turn the corner and you can look. And having it, the building set back at all. I think what happens then is that you either have to shape the building a different way, and you lose the, your parking capability or your square feet. So, I understand you can't maximize your square footage that way, but it's just the question of, is there a way to make it less of a, a, a large obstacle? And I think it's really that corner part. I don't know if there's a way where you can set the building back or have more in an alcove. That's just my own personal opinion. It's mostly focused on that corner.
Mrs. Luttrell.
My opinion is that it's far larger than any of the other buildings in the area. Most are between 2,000 and 3,000 square feet, except for the pizza place, which is just under five. So, I would want to see something more in line with the other buildings in the area, you know, around 5,000 square feet, to help address the concerns of the abutters. And the abutters have also said that they would like to see a smaller building.
Honestly, only one abutter has spoken opposition of the project. I, I mean, all the other abutters have, have gone, and, and, and they've been satisfied with what we submitted. I, I just don't understand. You made statements that there's a drainage problem, but we've addressed it, and your engineer has vetted that and agreed. But because an abutter said there's a drainage problem, there is a drainage problem, because an abutter said that there's, the size is too big, it's too big. And, and right up the street, the medical center, is volumes larger than this, volumes. And then, and up, up, there's a met, there's an office building right here on Main Street that's, that's bigger than this, right up the street. It's still in the same neighborhood. It's not that much different. The Halcy Building, I, I, you know, there's, that's all, different, different groups are in there, all sorts of different businesses, a daycare in there. I, I just don't understand the point. And, and it's 10 feet from the front, you, you had said it was on the property line, it's not. It's 10 feet back. That's the zoning requirement. And that's set back the same as the other buildings on there. The only one that's closer is the, is across the street. All of those are on the lot line, Lamy all the way down. And on our side, it's just the cleaners. The other buildings are set back.
Mr. Morris, can, that, so I went down and took pictures, and so the stakes are where the building would be. So, so my, sorry for my misstatement, that saying that's the property line. I think that is the setback line. So, I think from my perspective, it's, it's, I understand, it's just having a large two, you know, 7,000-square-foot, near 7,000-square-foot building that projects vertical for nearly three stories, and on that, that area right on the corner.
But again, the, so the other village business districts that I've been able to look at, we've got one down on Southville Road, we've got one down at Central Street, just at the corner, and that's, that's a three-story building that was approved for those two sites. That's why we, I brought the roof down. That's the most that I can do here. We have to have two stories of occupiable space, and we put the dormer in the back. So, there's no square footage. It's identifiable in the front. And I just, we can lower the roof pitch to six, I suppose, but at some point, it looks silly. You, you know, understand the scale and scope of that. That is not, it's, 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 it's out of, it's out of skew, if you will. The roof is not that, going to appear that tall. This is a very shallow roof pitch. If I could just, I'm just going to grab a, a cup of water in the other room there, if you don't mind. Just one minute.
Certainly. Mr. Mills.
So, to continue with the view of where we're at, I personally, you know, the, the building compared to what's there, I'm in favor of. The idea of the office space, the colonial appearance and shape and architecture, I think are all in line and fit well with the area and what downtown, I think, should, you know, look to emulate. The size, you know, for what I perceive as a potential client, for what we're talking about for office, office space, might be, say, a doctor or, you know, a law firm or something like that. They're going to need the parking that he, that's zoned, as requested. The bylaw requires it to be, you know, up front. So, I know it's a change from downtown. I know it appears big in the, the drawings. There are other large buildings, whether it be offices or even some residential homes that are rather big, that are just further on East Main Street, that actually go uphill. So, yes, I, I still think it's, I, I agree that it's, it's bigger than we're used to down there. But for what he's proposing, the use is to be... I didn't do that. But I'd be in favor of the project.
So, open up to the public, Mr. Bemis indicated that he wants us to vote tonight. So, after we hear from the public, I'll try to go over that process. Anyone from the public want to speak? Mr. Morrow.
Steve Morrow, through Main Street, Morrow's Village Cafe. Mr. Clary made a good statement two weeks ago at the meeting, that the village districts are what make our town unique and attractable to people. And I just feel as though this project, although I agree an office building would be nice there at that spot, and I would like to see something developed, it's just too big and just doesn't conform with that whole village district feel. And if you vote yes on this, you're going to really change that whole feel and whole dynamics of the village district downtown. Thank you.
Any, anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Karen Sokal, 16 Newton Street. I'm just curious as to what the drainage plan is. I know the, there is, next to the railroad, there's a drainage, sort of a intermittent stream, seasonal stream, and then there's, it goes into a culvert that goes under the road with the impermeable surface. I'm just wondering what exactly the drainage plan is, because I think it's very important in that location where the drainage water seems to collect, to know really how that's going to work. Thank you.
Can you answer that, Mr. Bemis?
So, there's a, there's a drain that is along our property, that is picking up a swale that we connect to, that goes out to East Main Street. It leaves East Main Street, and it heads towards the railroad tracks. From there, it goes across the street through Lamy's site and discharges at the rear of their site. It's all free-flowing. It drops around, I think it was eight to 10 feet. We provided that about six meetings ago. I don't recall the exact dimensions, but we did a survey to locate all of that, and we provided it.
Does that answer your question? Anyone else from the public? Yes, ma'am.
Freddie Gillespie again. So, if you close the hearing tonight, is that what's being asked? How do we then address the open item on native plants versus what's on the plan, his willingness to change them if we find them, but what's to say that doesn't happen? I thought we had, my understanding, and I don't have the plan in front of me, that it, the rest of the plants besides the arborvitae weren't native, which is why we had recommended the bush honeysuckle instead of the shrub that's there, as well at, for a low-growing shrub that has great landscape interest, as well as habitat value, as well as, we've mentioned, the zizia, and there's other plants instead of the Stella Dior. How do we, how would that be addressed?
The approval period for the both special permit and the site plan is September 30th. So, there's time for the board to advertise and hold another, and continue the public hearing beyond tonight, but not beyond September 30th. That's one way to take care of it. Another way, and this will get into what we're approaching, if there's no one else going to speak from the public, and that is, there'd be two votes, one to approve the site plan, and one to grant the special permit. Site plan requires three votes, three out of five. The special permit requires four out of five. We will, I guess I'll ask the board if the board wants to proceed with a vote based on the draft decisions. We have, we'll have to go over these, because there's some items that have to be filled in, as drafted, and add, subtract, or modify conditions, and then vote on that. Or, if we want to ask Mr. Bemis if he wants us to vote on the conditions as written with no changes. There's no sense in going through all kinds of changes, maybe there is, but if that's not going to be acceptable. And it's my understanding that the board has the authority to, in, within the special permit, the board does have the authority to limit the size of the building and other things. So, I'm personally against continuing the public hearing to a date between now and September 30th. Let me ask the board, do we want to have another, do we want to have another planning board meeting, which would include these, these hearings being continued to that date between now and September 30th?
Well, I think that the only real outstanding issue for, from a decision standpoint, if it was- it was the one plant, I think we could work that into the wording of the decision, is my point, so we could vote tonight.
Mr. Stein?
Yeah. I'm in agreement with Mr. Mills. If the conditions, um, somehow, um, compel the applicant to cooperate with the Open Space Commission's, uh, decision after their meeting and their letter, I'm not sure how that could happen, but if it can, um, at this point, I'd be ready to vote.
Mrs. Latrell?
So, Town Council verified that it's within our jurisdiction to put limitations, um, on the conditions. Could we condition a smaller building?
That's one way we could do it.
I, I think if the proponent is, um, not willing to do anything different, it doesn't make sense to have another hearing.
Mrs. Holley?
Uh, I'm in agreement with the, the other board members that we should go ahead and vote if we wanted to do that, and we could probably address things in the conditions.
So, let's go over the site plan draft conditions. Yeah, well, yeah. So, we have, um, a six-page, uh, draft decision of major site plan approval. Uh, the first section is procedural history. That, uh, gets, uh, the dates get put in there based on, on what we do tonight. Uh, and then, uh, then there's, uh, a list of correspondence. Again, that, uh, gets cleaned up. It's, it's, uh, all facts, except that, there's one date here for, for Town Council's, uh, opinion, which we'll fill in. Um, and then, uh, we have the findings. And that's a description, basically, of the project, and then a lot of, uh, boilerplate relative to, um, the zoning. And then we have waiver requests, which is, uh, just one, which is the parking space, uh, shall be at least nine and a half feet wide by 18 feet. The request, uh, the waiver that's being requested is to have it nine feet wide by 18 feet long. So, uh, we should vote on that as to whether or not we want to grant that waiver. Are we ready for that? Mr. Mills?
I make a motion, we grant the waiver for, uh, for zoning 174-12C, two, that each parking space shall be, um, nine and a half feet by 18 feet long, to the request of the applicant that they're nine feet by 18 feet long.
Second.
Most has been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Three in favor? Four in favor. All opposed. You got that? So, the waiver is granted. Then, uh, the next section is the, the decision and the vote of the board, which we haven't done yet, but it just captures, uh, the, the vote that we would be taking. And then, uh, subject to the following conditions, and there are twenty, nineteen conditions, some of which are standard, some of, are site-specific. First one is, uh, a general condition regarding, uh, following the rules and regulations applicable thereto. Next one is, uh, all restrictions and conditions from the board, boards and commissions required pursuant to other permits related to the project shall be complied with. That's standard. The next one, uh, is a, number three is, I'll read it, "The only proposed use for the site slash building is office space. As stated during the planning board public hearings for the major site plan approval and the special permit village business district, any change in use from the proposed office space for the site slash building shall require a new application for major site plan approval before the planning board." We good with that one?
Yes.
Next one, uh, has to do with the lighting and the photometric plan, which we've gone over. That one relative to the, uh, office space condition. Peter, are you okay with that?
Number three.
Yeah, the, the office, that's what it is. Yes.
Next one is, uh, lighting, uh, and the photometric plan. We've gone over that. And, uh, it's the standard where, uh, during the one-year period following the lighting installation, uh, the lights can be adjusted up or down. Uh, that's a standard one. We're in agreement. Uh, number five is the light fixtures. The exterior shall be no greater than 3,000 degrees Kelvin, color temperature warm to reduce blue light. And I think we're all in agreement with that one. Is that right? So, if I, if I ask if, if everyone's in agreement and, and I say, "Is that right?" or something similar, and I don't hear an answer, I'm gonna assume that it's okay. Hours, next one is number six. Hours of operation of the building will be, did we go over that? I thought we did last week, last time.
We did go over it, but, um, Peter Bemis wants it to stay as regulated by the town of Southborough. Um, you didn't have specific hours.
Right, 'cause I mean, we want to be open when other businesses are open in town. So if the town regulates other businesses, then we will follow those regulations. But, you know, this, this, the business is open early here, business is open late here. So I would like to be open through those hours. I don't, I'm not gonna inconvenience anyone.
Would it be safe, that's usually, we don't usually do it that way. So, would it be safe to say that between midnight and 6:00 AM, the, uh, building will be, uh, those would not be office hours?
I think that's pretty safe to assume that those hours aren't gonna be office hours, yes.
So why don't we do that?
Okay.
Hours of operation for the office building will be...
They, if they need to change it, I'll, I'll come back. I don't expect it.
Yeah. 6:00 AM until, uh, 12:00 AM, Monday through Friday.
Okay.
Same on the weekends?
Everybody works a lot of hours these days. I don't think Sunday needs to necessarily follow that, but Saturday probably should.
Would, but they would be there, they could be there on a Sunday, right?
Sure.
So, just...
And I think, I don't think those hours are unreasonable for them to be open in those hours. That's, that's, and if someone's there doing work...
Put the same hours in.
Yeah, yeah.
Six to midnight, six to midnight.
Right.
Okay. Board okay with that?
Yeah.
Next one is number seven. It has to do with the landscaping. And then there's three subbullets.
I just wanted to have that provision, that if, if Freddie and her group can come up with a plant that can substitute for those Stella doors and it works the same way, I'm fine with it. That's the only plant that I think we had a, an issue with. So, but generally speaking, that's, I'll try my best to do that. I wanna set an example with that location and not be the exception, that's for sure.
So...
But if there is, but if we can't find an equal plant that has similar habit and similar growth pattern, then I would just say, can, can we just, those, those Stella doors make it, they work in the summer. That's why you see them everywhere. They're very effective.
But on the board right now, and on the papers in front of us, we have three bullets. You're talking about a fourth bullet?
No. I, I, well, I think that Mr. Stein had suggested a, a...
So what would be the, the wording? You're talking about the first bullet?
I think what, the approach would be, uh, subject to proponents' adherence to final, to the outcome of the pending Open Space Commission meeting.
Recommendation.
Recommendation. Right. And you could even tie it to that one plant.
And date the recommendation.
Yeah, that's the way to go, but it's, it's, it's getting information after, outside the public hearing, unless we nail it down to...
Pending the rec...
One plant or another, something like that.
Be right, uh...
It's more than one plant.
Everything else is supposed to be straight native species, except for the...
No, there's a cultivar in there, too. The inkberry's a cultivar.
One was a compact because, we picked, we picked inkberry because it's specifically one of the plants that you want, but it happens to be a compact variety. It's been bred to stay small, but it, it's still an inkberry. And, and I, I think that the last meeting, there was a gentleman who was far more articulate on this issue than, than I could ever be, that gave you a document for the Fayetteville Hall property, and I, I would trust his judgment. I mean, some of these cultivars have been made in order to serve a purpose. In this case, we're trying to keep it small. Inkberries can get very large. It would be inappropriate for that large inkberry in front of the building. So I won't plant the inkberry if I have to use a regular one because it gets too big. So I, I just...
Well, I think that the Open Space Preservation Commission chair gave you a recommendation on something to use other than that, the, the bush honeysuckle or...
No, I, I, I'll just go with the straight natives, and if I can't make it work, I'm gonna come back and see you. That's, that's all. It'd be an amendment that, the way, the way these decisions are drafted, the building inspector has to be the enforcement authority. And if, if she's not comfortable with it, I'll come back and I'll see you. Folks about amending it. I mean, I don't know else to do it. I wanna get through this. And I don't wanna argue about a plant. So...
Go ahead, Freddie.
That sounds like a really good idea. I think normally we had any plants that didn't, um, survive, had to be replanted, and then the town planner had to approve anything. And I think we could say if, you know, we come up with a plan that Peter can agree on, that's all native straight species except for the arbividy, we'll do that at our meeting on the 26th. Um, and if that doesn't work and have up to a year, then he can, you know, make the changes he needs. I mean, does that sound like something you can write into it?
So the, the sentence, the first bullet sentence would end at the word arbividy? Is that right, Peter?
Yes.
Board okay with that?
Yep.
Yes.
Next two bullets are standard. Number eight, utilities, common, underground. All set?
Yes.
Number nine, final plans.
The square footage is what's on the, the plan. We can write it down, too. It's, it's, it's 6571.
So it's the same as what you submitted in the last site plan? The, um, the building itself is 7,000 square feet, but the office space is 6,570, and the storage spaces, I haven't written in here.
Oh, right, the, the, right, the floor, the, well, again, that's, we put trusses up there, so it's not, you can't get in there to any of the other space. We deliberately said that.
So if you look at the, in red, right?
Yeah.
I think when we spoke in my office last week, and we went over the new plans?
No, it's, it's six, it's 6571. That's exactly what's on the plan.
Okay.
For the, for the office space, and that's it. The rest of it's storage.
For a total of 7,000 square feet. So you have a 40 by 75-foot building, right? Times, so 3,000 square feet?
Correct.
3,000 square feet, 1,500 square feet. And it's in the third story that you're defining the accessory storage area?
Right.
Which is going to be...
But you really don't need to put it...
I don't, but I need to know.
The approval is for this, it really should, the 7,000 should really say 6571, 'cause that's what it is.
6571.
Right.
With the remaining being the storage, because that means your parking requirement.
Right. The rest is storage.
For a total of 7,000 square feet.
No, the 7,000 was, was before, when we, we asked for the waiver on the parking spaces, and that was not supported. So it's six, based upon 23 parking spaces, you have 6,571 square feet. That's the max building, and that's what we provided on the architectural plan. The rest, the eve space is still storage, correct.
So you took away floor, flooring? Is it, oh, yeah, yeah. I guess I'm confused. Let me just go back to the architectural. I just wanna make sure I write it the right way.
Well, it's 3,000 a floor, so I mean, if you, if you, the third floor would be 3,000 feet as well, but you can't, you can't use any of it other than the 671 square feet that's in the dormer.
Okay, so here's the third floor.
We put 560 is what we wrote there, right?
Right?
Yeah.
So what's, is there floor here?
Well, there's floor there, yes, but there's, it's all trusses.
Is there floor here?
You, you can put a box in there, but you can't get in, you can't, you know, you, you'd, you'd have to duck to go through.
But the 560 is office space.
Correct.
So this is what you're considering storage area?
Correct. Right.
And if you took all square footage of three floors, what's your total?
So that would be 9,000 square feet. 'Cause it's, it's, it's 3,000 square feet a floor, but of, of the third floor, you can only occupy 560 square feet of it.
For office.
Correct. And the rest is storage, but it's very little use, storage. It's gonna be cubbyholes in there because it's trusses. Which, which Mr. Morse was concerned, that how could we prevent someone from going in there? That's why we did it this way. You can't.
So where I describe it as 7,000-square-foot building is not correct?
Correct. That's what I'm saying. It's, it's...
So what would it be if I described the building in...
If you wanted to say the total mass, it's, is, is a 9,000-square-foot footprint.
Or maybe I'll say 40 by 75-foot footprint.
That's what I would say, right, 'cause you can't, you can't do anything with that third floor. If you did, if you, if you opened the frame up, then you could, but that's the point in doing trusses.
Okay, and I'm only belaboring this because in the decision, I described the property, uh, the proposal as a 7,000-square-foot building based on your application.
That was the first application, right.
So if, in the decision here, I would write a 40 by 75-foot, two-and-a-half-story building?
Right.
If that is what the planning board feels comfortable with. Okay, I just wanted to define the space.
I wouldn't define it as a ni, it's not a 9,000-square-foot foot...
Okay. I just wanted to be clear.
So, number 10, "The final architectural plans, as required for the village business district plan review, shall call out the, quote, 'office space' and accessory, quote, 'storage space' areas. Show the limits of the accessory storage space proposed on the third floor, the basement crawl space, and proposed signs on the building face, as well as be stamped by a registered architect."
Yeah, we, and that's what we delivered. That, that's what those two sheets are. Says all of that and it's stamped.
Number 11, "The final plan shall include details of the proposed freestanding sign for the site."
And that's, that's on the, um, the second sheet, the freestanding sign detail. It's right there, to the left of, yep, right there.
Is that sufficient? It's right here.
Is board okay with that?
Yes. I gotta go to native. Can you do these? I don't, I don't think there's anything that's stamped.
Number 12 then goes to, uh, "Provide a sign permit to the town's building inspector for the sign located adjacent to the parking entrance and the two signs on the building face." for the sign located adjacent to the parking entrance and the two signs on the building face. Signage shall not exceed 10% of the business's facade or be directly attached to an exterior wall without an intermediate removable surface per Section 174-11C-5A and Section 174-11C-7, respectfully. We're good with that?
Yes.
Number 13, talks about prior to the lapse of the approval period, three sets of final plans shall be submitted. Good with that?
Yes.
14, prior to the start of construction, major site plan approval decision and the associated special permit for Village Business District decision with reduced size approved plans attached for reference shall be recorded with written proof of recording provided to the planning board. Good with that one?
Yes.
15, talks about, after they've been recorded, a copy of the plans will be submitted to the planning board along with electronic PDF files, AutoCAD files for the project, one, at least one week prior to the pre-construction meeting. We okay with that one?
Yes.
16, a pre-construction meeting, we good with that?
Yes.
14 days. Number 17, prior to initiating site disturbance activity and construction, the applicant shall provide in writing the name of the person responsible for the site. We good?
Yes.
18, prior to construction, a copy of the stormwater pollution prevention plan and fully executed stormwater operation and maintenance plan stamped by a PE, registered in Massachusetts, must be filed with the planning board. Good with that one?
Yes.
Number 19, after construction is completed, talks about as built, we good with that?
Yes.
And 20. The major site plan, a special permit for Village Business District approvals and conditions shall apply to operator, owner, and all successors. We good with that one?
Yes.
Were there any other conditions that we wanted to add? Result from tonight's discussion or previous? Karina.
I just wanna be clear on nine, 10. Conditions nine and 10 that were about specifying, you know, the square footage of the office space and accessory storage. If you're, you accept the plans, the architectural floor plans, the way they're shown now. So the recent submission, the current submission of architectural plans shows the third floor with 560 square feet as a use group B. I, to me, I think the final plans should specify, even though he does have it right here, if this is sufficient, if you look in the bottom corner here, he wrote use group B, office use. Or do you want use group B to be replaced with office space?
We've, we never use that term. That's a building inspector's term, so I don't have-
The final plan should specifically say office space instead of group. Use group B.
On the unit floor plan there, you just don't wanna see the words use group B, you wanna see office space? Okay.
And I think part of that stems from the site plan. On the building, it's labeled "commercial building." It doesn't say "office building." So there's an apprehension, we just wanna make sure it's clear.
Okay.
Office, that's why it's continuing to press that topic, right? So if that gets changed, the architectural layout as far as the 560 feet on the third floor being specified as that's office space is acceptable. That's all, I'm just wanna make sure that the planning board is aware of that, okay.
Get rid of that B. Use B, get rid of that. Mrs. Holley.
Would we be entertaining the condition of a smaller office building?
I don't think under the major site plan, but under the special permit, that's where we have the authority. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, Karen Sokol, 16 Newton Street. I know it's sort of out of turn, but I also would appreciate if it was a smaller, somewhat smaller building. I think it would be, it's not, I think it's a good idea to have something there, but it, that, that's very large. I didn't realize until tonight quite how large the project was in size. Just input, thank you.
Mrs. Latrell.
So, um, if the condition for size is under the site plan, can, we can't vote on the, I mean, under the special permit, we can't vote on the site plan until we do the special permit, because this calls out the square footage?
Yeah, this is where it gets interesting. If- So, that's, yeah, that's procedural. As far as the text of the draft decision and the conditions, we just went through them. If everybody's good with those, we'll do the same with the special permit. And then we'll talk about the vote. Does that sound good? So, any more on, on the site plan? So, Karina, would it be better if you take us through the special permit? Because a lot of this is the same as in the site plan. So if you just took us through the ones that are unique to the special permit?
Okay, so just to clarify, all the conditions that are listed in the special permit for Business Village District are in the major site plan approval decision as well. All I did was take out certain conditions out of the major site plan that don't really apply to the Business Village District. So Business Village District focuses on parking and access and those types of features. So if there were fire department comments about, you know, fire lane or whatever, those stay in the Business Village District. But things like the requirement for the SWIP or the owners, the operation and maintenance agreement for stormwater, that wouldn't be in the special permit, that's already covered. So all I did was take the major site plan conditions and remove the ones that aren't applicable for Business Village. And I can go through that really quickly here. So if you look at the first page of the decision, again, it's the procedural history with dates that would just have to be updated according to the final sets of plans. If you then continue, item eight is other materials that came with the application. Number nine is correspondence from the various departments and entities. And what you see highlighted will be filled in with town council's review letters, the dates of those. This highlighted section is if the project were to be extended with an extension request. Then we come to the findings. These are standard information so that someone in the future can look back and say, what does this decision mean according to the bylaw? And it follows the criteria required in the bylaw for both the special permit and Business Village District. These particular items, scenic views, major dimensions, appearance, building, the sign, other elements. Then we come to number six, which is specific to the project, that describes the project. And I'll, I will revise that so that it doesn't say 7,000 square feet anymore. It's gonna say the footprint of the building, which is 40 by 75 feet, two and a half story building. And I will update the square footage that Mr. Bemis indicated of 6,571 square feet and 560 square feet here to match the architectural plans. Then as you go, there were no waiver requests under the Business Village District. The parking spaces were part of the major site plan approval. Then we come to the decision, which repeat, it's repeated from the beginning. The highlights are the states that have to be updated. And the conditions, you'll see here. Condition number one is standard, applicant shall apply, shall comply with all provisions of the bylaw and rules and regs here too. This is the first sentence of the first condition of the major site plan. Number two, the only proposed use for the site plan is office space. As stated during the planning board, this is repeat from major site plan. So I guess we'll just, just, just say to this, I'm gonna mark these as we go through. So number one was okay, I believe. Number two was the same, that's okay. Number three is the lighting, which is the same as the major site plan lighting. Number four is the same, the reduction of blue light with the restriction for 30,000 degrees Kelvin. Number five, I will fill in the hours of operation that we just discussed under the major site plan approval. Number six is the landscaping. The exact same verbiage, except I will make the revision, just like the major site plan, to end the first bullet after the word arbividy and cross off perennial, perennial planting beds. Then number seven is all underground utilities, same as major site plan. Which one am I in here?
All the rest are the same as site plan.
Yes, all the rest. Number eight, the final plans will be square footage. Number nine, final architectural plans are required, shall say office space, which we just discussed. Number 10, the planning board agreed that the sign was acceptable that way. The sign. Number 11 was for sign permit. Number 12, the, prior to construction, the recording of the decisions with the half-size plans, or reduced plans. And then number 13 is as built requirement. Number 14 was that these decisions shall apply to the operator, owner, and all successors, which was the same. So it's just a truncated version of the other conditions from major site plan.
So based on what was said a few minutes ago, you, everything is okay except number six. Finding number six. And is that, that's the only place that the size of the building is listed?
Let me just double check here. No, under procedural history, item number two, also references the sign. So there are three, I mean, the, the size of the building, there's three references to the size. Under the very beginning of the decision, you have a description of the project. Here, the 7,000 square feet will change to the footprint size.
Yeah, okay, but, um, number six refers to what was submitted. The project proposes a certain size building. So we would leave that alone. Because that's what's being proposed. You're gonna change the 7,000 to the size of, you know, the shape of the building, the dimensions.
In number six, yeah.
In number six, but otherwise it stays.
Correct.
So we would be adding a condition somewhere, it'd be a condition number 15, or it would be the 15th condition that would describe the size that's approved under the special permit. So as I asked earlier, we have, we have to, we've said what we object to, but we- we need to, we need to propose something that we would approve, and we should also have that based on something. My thought was the mixed use proposal that Mr. Bemis was talking about with the ZBA. Was there objections to the size of that building? Or was it the objection just to the two uses? Do you, do you remember? Because if there was no objections to the size of, of that building for that proposal, then maybe the board should look at that.
I don't know if the, if the project proceeded far enough for a discussion of size. They were before the ZBA for more than one use on a lot, and so there was the discussion of the uses at the ZBA.
Karina's gonna try to find it in the files.
I know, I have, I have a copy of the zoning, the ZBA application for the variance, for the mixed use, I have a hard copy of that.
Yeah, once you get it.
Let me see if I can, I just wanna see if it was here as well.
Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion for a two-minute recess.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and any discussion, or a favor? We'll see you in a couple of minutes, thank you.
Here it is. Sorry.
It's okay. Planning Board is back in session. While we were out, we were able to look at the files, and we found the submittal for the project that Mr. Bemis was referring to earlier, that was mixed-use. That project never came before the planning board, but we do have it on, on the files here. And you can see, we can see now, it's basically the same size and location of a building. So, I guess, I can be corrected, but if we are objecting to the size of this building for office space, then we need to propose what would be acceptable, what we would approve under the special permit. So I'll open it up, back up to the board for suggestions on a revised size that would be consistent with the discussion, which is smaller. Mr. Mills?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna reiterate what I said earlier, that I would be in favor of the project as-is, because I'm in favor of the office space at that location, and actually doing something on that lot. I think the entire time I've been here in town, it's been barren or fenced off. And I think it would be a good addition with the architectural plans and the office spaces proposing for that location.
Anyone else? Mrs. Latrell?
I would propose five thousand square feet, which is in keeping larger than all the other buildings in the area, but much more in proportion to the other buildings in the area, which is part of the special permit criteria.
Mrs. Houlihan?
I would actually support Ms. Latrell's recommendation of five thousand square feet. So, in looking at the square footage of the other buildings directly near this property, they range from eighteen hundred to forty-seven hundred square feet. So I think it's giving a little bit more leeway, but staying within the nature of what was intended and what is intended with keeping with Southborough.
And how about the setbacks? If the building is, goes from seven thousand to five thousand, it's possible that the setbacks would be reduced. They don't have to be. You can still build a five thousand square foot building with the same setbacks on the, on Main Street, on East Main Street and on Newton Street. The other dimensions of the building might be, might be different. Does the board want to address the setbacks? Mrs. Houlihan?
So, I, if we propose for the five thousand square feet, I would be fine leaving the setbacks as-is. I think it, it covers the intent, which I had, which is more of a safety provision around the corner of Newton and Main.
So, the, the fifteenth condition will say? Karina?
The proposed building shall be no larger than five thousand square feet.
Is the board okay with that?
I'm not, I'm not-
I'm not asking for the vote. I'm just asking for the, the language of the condition. If we, if we understand that language, then we can make an informed decision when we vote. If we don't understand the language, then we need to work on it. But if we understand the language, then we can write it down, and it'll be the basis, you know, for our, our vote. So we're okay with the, we understand the language? Mr. Bemis?
The applicant would not be okay with that, no. I think the best thing for the applicant at this point would be for this project to be evaluated based on its merits, as previously discussed and agreed upon, going through the documents here, and based on what's in the plans of record.
Thank you. So, are there any other questions or comments from the public relative to that additional condition that would reduce the size of the building? Mr. Stein?
So, you know, one thing that I've learned being on the planning board is, you know, just when the point of compromise comes. And I agree in principle with the comments of my fellow board members about the size and the character issues, but I would not want to lose the concessions that we have gotten from the proponent around the site plan. And I think there's, there's significant conditions that help us as a town. And the cooperation with the Open Space Commission is not something that we wanna, that we wanna flush. So, just wanted to put it out there as far as where I was on this project.
Steve?
Yeah, just one question. If you're gonna reduce the size to five thousand square feet, are you talking about reducing the height of the building? Are you talking about reducing the dimensions of the building?
The town planner just leaned over and suggested that we include that either in the discussion or in the language of the decision. So, yeah, go ahead, Tim.
Tim, Woodland Road. I'm a little confused, because I'm simple-minded. I don't see how you can accept the plans that he put forward, and then specify some condition that resizes the building out from under him. I mean, I think if you don't like the plans, you have to reject it. And if you do like, or if you, if you can live with the plans, then you have to accept it. I don't, and this doesn't make any sense to me, but of course, I'm an engineer and I just put blocks together.
That's one way to do it, would be to vote just on the, on the plan itself, which we discussed earlier procedurally, would be to, to vote to approve the plan as submitted, or, and if, if that vote doesn't carry, then you have, you have options to either repeal the actions of the board, or to withdraw, or to come back with something different. Or, we would approve the plan subject to a condition. And if the condition is to reduce the size of the building, if that's what the board wants to do, it has to be based on something, and I think you described, it was described as to what it was based on. But we still need to get clarity on the height and the, the footprint.
I don't think you can override what the plan says with a condition, just as a simple-minded member of the public. But, that's all I have to say.
So does, is it, does the board want to vote to approve the site plan as submitted? And vote to grant the special permit as submitted?
I would be in favor of that.
Same. Ready to vote.
I, I actually agree with that myself, and I think earlier, I, maybe not tonight, but at earlier meetings, I, I indicated that, I found myself, it's kinda rare, but I actually was agreeing with Mr. Bemis. You know, it does meet the zoning. And that's what he submitted. We do have the authority to change it, but since the proponent is not willing to do that, then we are probably in better shape to vote on what's been presented to us. If the vote carries, then you'll, you'll have an approved site plan and a special permit. If the vote to approve the site plan doesn't carry, and if the vote for the special, or if that... I guess you can't have one without the other, because both indicate the seven thousand square foot.
Right.
Right. Now, for the special permit, we know that we're well within our authority to not grant the special permit. But for site plan approval, that's a little different. We can't approve one without, and not the other, if it's based on the size.
So you wanna do the special permit first?
Yeah. Well, maybe what we, we should do would be to vote on the special permit tonight. Let's think about this. Vote on the special permit tonight, and if it's, if it, if it passes, then we would vote on the site plan. If the special permit is not granted, then we would take no action on the site plan. And on Septe- on Septe- on October first, which would be the day after the approval period ended, the site plan would be approved because of our inaction.
Site plan as?
As submitted.
Including where we've come to this point? Without our conditions?
Would it be, would it be with, so we would lose the conditions that we've agreed on with the moment if we take that course, correct?
I don't think we, I don't think we would. I'm, I'm just trying to think if I was a proponent and I received a, an approved site plan because the board took no action within the approval period, what, what good would that be to me without the special permit? I couldn't proceed without the special permit. So if the board votes to deny the site plan, I think we're on not very strong ground there, because it meets the zoning, and it really doesn't fit, fit into the, the very few reasons for denying a site plan. Mrs. Latrell?
Isn't the site plan for Business Village a special permit?
Under section of the bylaw one seventy-four dash ten point one, Village Business District Plan Review. Within the Village Business District, major site plan approval shall be by special permit from the planning board, subject to the procedural requirements and decision criteria of section one seventy-four dash nine special permit requirements, and section one seventy-four dash ten, site plan approval, and the following in addition to the above. So it is, it says, major site plan approval shall be by special permit following special permit requirements and site plan approval requirements.
So we should do special permit first before we do the site plan? I think for the applicant, we should vote on both. Because whatever decision goes forward, if decides to appeal it, or whatever happens, I think there should be a decision by the board, that's why we're here, for what was put before us, is my opinion.
I can say that Town Council has reviewed both decisions as unedited tonight, and found no concern as far as the format, which indicates to me that it is a major site plan and a special permit in the Business Village District. So that's not the question, right? It's what to do first.
No, Mrs. Latrell said there's two special permits. One for site plan under Village Business District, which is one seventy-four dash ten point one. Which is different than one seventy-four dash ten. One seventy-four dash ten does not require a special permit. One seventy-four dash ten point one, the way we just read it, says that it would be site plant, major site plan approval shall be by special permit. So it sounds like there are two special permits. One under one seventy-four ten one for site plan.
Well, this says, within the Village Business District, major site plan approval shall be by special permit from the planning board, subject to the procedural requirements and decision criteria of special permits, one seventy-four dash nine and one seventy-four dash ten. That's why the Business Village District Special Permit under the findings, the criteria references the requirements of special permit, one seventy-four dash nine, and the Business Village Special Permit requirements. But it does, um... Yeah, I don't mind the answer to that.
So the site plan's a special permit, and then there's a special permit for any use over two thousand square feet in the Business Village District?
Oh, I see what you're saying. So under section one seventy-four dash eight point four, Business Village District, it says, under B, under C, permitted uses by special permit from the planning board are as follows. All uses listed in subsection B that are greater than two thousand square feet. And office use, which is under section B, requires, if it's more than two thousand square feet, special permit from the planning board. And to me, I interpreted that, that was the Business Village Special Permit, Business Village District Special Permit.
So we're, we'd be granting a special permit under one seventy-four dash eight point four?
No, I think that section refers, is, is tied into the Business Village District-
Ten point one.
Ten point one. Plan review. So you have to do a major site plan review, and then you have to do a special permit, because it's over two thousand square feet of that use in a Business Village District. If it wasn't, if it was under two thousand square feet, you wouldn't have to do a special permit. You would just have a site plan.
So, the motion to, for the, there's two, it appears as though- So, the motion to, for the, there's two, it appears as though there's two special permits. Or there's two sections that require a special permit. So, the motion would then be to approve the site plan to grant a special permit for site plan under 174 There's three, there's three, well, there's four, four sections. There's 8.4, 174 Special Permits, which is B9, 8.4, 9, 10, and 10.1. Right? Those are the four. The 9 applies to any special permit. It tells us how to do a special permit. The 10.1 is the Village Business District Plan Review. And it talks about Site Plan Approval Shall Be By Special Permit.
But this is, I thought this was the district description of what you have to do that follows in the...
So, would, would we, okay. So, it sounds like the first motion would be to grant a special permit under site plan But that requires four out of five votes. Special permit. And then, the next motion would be to grant the special permit
But we have to close the public hearing.
Right. But are we in agreement that there's two special, there's a special permit for site plan, which is 174-10? So, that would be a motion. And then, there's another special permit under 174-10.1.
Which is for?
Village Business District.
And the vote would be based on the plan before us?
And the first one, 10, is?
10 is site plan. 10.1 is site plan, Village Business District.
May I ask a question?
Who said that?
Me.
Okay.
Regarding a special permit for site plan, that only procedurally changes the number of votes required, correct? In practice, it's going to require four out of five votes?
Because of the term, because of the section, the code requires it to be by special permit, and
Yes.
any special permit is super, super majority.
I understand, thank you.
Anything else from the board?
Just, just so I'm clear, before we, because it seems like we're getting ready to close the public hearing. When we talk about conditions for the special permit in the Business, Village Business District, can, can you tell me again what the wording is? Because I want, I want to be clear that, what I'm voting on.
Right here.
Specifically around the square footage?
No, I think all you have to do is refer to the plan.
Okay, we're gonna, we're sticking, we're back to what was requested. We're not saying lowering it or anything, we're just going with what we have. Okay.
And just to add, the reason, often you don't see the square footage in the decision itself when you read the motion, right? It's written here because we wanted to make sure it was clear.
Right, but, so what was discussed with Mr. Bemis when he was here was that the square footage should be 6,571?
6,571 square feet was the square footage when your father was...
Of office space.
Office space.
Yes.
So, when we're talking about approving with conditions, that's the square footage that was before us by the applicant. Okay, thank you.
So, the first motion would be to grant the special permit for site, right, for site plan under 174-10. The second motion would be to grant the special permit for
Business Village.
Site plan.
Special, Business.
174-8?
No, it would be the 10.1.
10.1, right here. Major Site Plan Should Be By Special Permit In The Village Business District.
I think if we just refer to the two requirements, link the project to those two code sections, we either approve it, or we don't. Anything else from the board? Anything from the public, Mr. Bemis, anything?
All set.
Anything from the public, Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a...
Hold on.
One more thing. I'm not familiar with the change of plans from office building to the first proposal that they had. Did they shrink the septic requirements as well, seeing that we're going for office space versus retail, et cetera, from the first plan that we had seen?
The Planning Board never saw that for his plan. We never saw it.
So, how many, how many gallons per day are...
If Mr. Bemis can answer that, but we don't have that. We never got that.
So, you don't know how many gallons per day are allowed at the site, but you're going to vote?
For this project, you were asking about the mixed use.
Right, so my question, I guess, is, on this project, how many gallons per day of septic is allowed?
Mr. Bemis? We went over that a couple of meetings ago.
I believe this is already covered ground. These are numbers that I don't have access to right now, but this sounds to me like a Board of Health matter. And I believe that's already been covered and vetted properly. I don't want to speak out of turn here and, you know, perjure myself, as it were. So, I'm going to let it rest with the Board of Health.
Is that where you're going, Karina?
Yeah, I thought we had a septic plan for this project at some point. Let me just...
I believe, yes, that should be, I believe that's part of the package.
Was it the original submittal? Let me just look really quickly if we have that. All right, hold on, let me look one more place. I think it was with the second submission. So, it would be here. Here it is, Soil Absorption System. Okay. And if you, and we want to know the gallons per day. Did you do that design, Zach?
I did not, no.
All right, hold on. If you look at the plan. Design Criteria. Now, this was a plan that was previously submitted in 2018, when it was still residential. The proposal was residential. So, therefore, your design criteria shows four one-bedroom units, and then also the 3,600 square, of retail.
But Steve, you're asking this, this project, the office building?
I'm curious on the office building, whether, I know that, speaking to the Board of Health...
We've got to get a mic, Steve.
So, we only have, we only...
I know that speaking to the Board of Health before, depending on the usage of the property, you're allowed so many gallons per day. And I know originally, the big, bigger project, they required to, I believe it was about 760 gallons a day. And I'm just curious, now that they've changed it to an office building, whether they have also shrunk the sewerage and drainage issues that were pending from the first one.
Do the site plan show the septic footprint of the leaching area of the, on the current plan?
On the current site plan?
On the current site plan, I think I see something right here under Utilities, right? Let me look one more spot, just to help you out here. So, see on your second sheet? Right, if you look under your...
Yes, there's a septic system shown on the second sheet.
See the septic system right here?
Yes.
Okay, is that what was proposed during the office and residential proposal? Do you know, because that's what, you know, the septic plan you submitted
Right.
under the second submission, reflected the four residential transient hotel units, or non-transient hotel units, in the 3,600.
Just speaking from my knowledge, Title V, residential typically has the highest water consumption, or, you know, waste demand. So, if we're switching from residential, or mixed use that included residential, to an office space exclusive, that number would only go down. I don't want to get stuck in small details and get lost in the forest yet again.
Yeah.
So, I just, I'd really like to put this to a vote, based on the merits of the project before you, based on matters relevant to the Planning Board. And I think it's inappropriate to bring this up right now, at the moment we're about to have a vote. I think at the moment, I really need a vote, and I need to get home to make sure that my father is fine. Thank you.
It's about the best we can do for an answer for you, Steve. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Mills?
Make a motion to close the public hearing for 2 East Main Street, Major Site Plan Approval, and close the public hearing for 2 East Main Street, Special Permit, Village Business District.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, the public hearings are closed. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the site plan for 2 East Main Street, Major Site Plan Approval under 174-10, as requested by the applicant, with conditions that were reviewed and amended this evening.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Luttrell?
Section on 10.1, the site plan for...
It's the special permit.
They're both special permits.
They're both special permits.
So, this is a motion to grant the special permit under 174-10, and then there's another special permit under 174-10.1.
I just didn't hear the special permit, I heard major site plan.
So, let me amend that. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the special permit for Major Site Plan Approval For 2 East Main Street under Section 174-10, with conditions that were reviewed and amended this evening, 9/23/2019.
Second, as amended.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of granting the special permit? All opposed? Vote is three in favor, two opposed. And you have the individuals' votes.
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we grant the special permit under Village Business District for 2 East Main Street, with conditions that were reviewed and amended this evening, September 23, 2019.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Three in favor, two opposed? So, you didn't obtain the super majority, and there'll be a record of this action tonight, and wish you the best of luck moving forward. And please, please know that we, we hope that your father's feeling okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing for 25 Marlborough Road, St. Mark's Dormitory, Major Site Plan Approval. It's continued from September 9th. Also, a public hearing for 25 Marlborough Road, St. Mark's Dormitory, Lower Impact Development, continued from September 9th, 2019. We'll ask the town planner to give us an update on what's happened since September 9th. If you guys want to squeeze another chair there, and just share the mics, however it works for you. Good evening, welcome back.
Thank you.
Why don't you wait a second? We usually have the town planner give us the update, and then we turn it over to you.
Give me one second, I just want to catch up.
And you're signing the sign-in sheets?
Since the last Planning Board meeting on September 9th, we received a second submission from Whitman and Bingham, the team engineer with plans dated September 16, 2019, and this updated stormwater report dated September 16, 2019. The submission was sent to Fussin O'Neill for review, to the Planning Board, to the town departments. We have not received comments back from the town departments. However, we did receive Fussin O'Neill review comments this evening, which were given to the Planning Board in a hard copy form, and also the applicant right at the beginning of tonight's meeting. So, there hasn't been a chance to really review those. I also want to point out that Jesse Stein provided Mullins Rule forms to the town clerk for his absence at the September 9th meeting. And that is what I have up to date.
Very good, good evening, welcome back.
Thank you. I can just introduce a few people who are new since the last time. My name's Rob, I'm the Chief Financial and Operations Officer. Here again, Lisa's with Goody Clancy, she's our architect. And then back is Lee, our project manager. Andrew with Andrew T. Leonard, our landscape architect. Sandra Duran is our Director of Facilities behind me. Brian is with our civil engineering firm. And this time new is our Assistant Head of School Samantha Brennan, who's with us as well. So, we're happy to be back and...
Hold on, hold on a second.
This one might be off.
That happened last time, too. Testing, does that work?
Oh, it was off. Start all over again.
All right. Just quickly, I'm Rob, I'm the Chief Financial and Operations Officer at St. Mark's School. Lisa's with our architecture firm. Lee is our project manager. Andrew is our landscape architect. Sandra is our Director of Facilities. Brian is our civil engineer, this is a lot of name introducing. And Samantha Brennan is our Assistant Head of School, who's here with us as well. So, without further... So, without further ado, I want to bring Andrew in, who can help take it from here.
Brian.
And Brian, as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I'm on right. Hello. Good evening, for the record, my name's Brian Malisi with Whitman &amp; Bingham Associates. We are the civil engineers for the project. Just to kind of give a quick update, I know Karina did. We had received initial comments from Fussin O'Neill, opened up the hearing, I believe, two Monday nights ago. Got some initial comments from the board. We went back and created a response letter to Fussin O'Neill's comments, and a revised set of plans. Most of the information from the, in the revised set of plans, were based on Fussin O'Neill's comments, having to do with some drainage, having to do with some grading, and typical site plan review style comments. We are in front of you also for a lower impact development special permit, so a lot of the, again, the comments came from a stormwater-related standpoint. I don't know if you want me to go through each and every one, there was about 32 comments. I love drainage, it could bore everyone to tears, but I don't know if that would be certainly pertinent this time. I don't know if the boards had a chance to look at those revised plans. I could try to come up with kind of a thumbnail sketch on what changed. But again, most of it had to do with providing some information, backing up some of our calculations, and whatnot. The stormwater operation and maintenance plan was revised to include a maintenance agreement. We put that at the beginning of the, of the ONM. That was a couple of the comments from Fussin O'Neill. Most of the site plan changes, I guess were more related to the landscape architect. So I guess without further ado, I'll throw it over to Andrew, and he can go through some of the plant changes and whatnot that you're about...
Sure, we made a few comments, or a few changes. One related to the driveway width comment, which was just adjusted in the plans. From a plant standpoint, we heard several of the comments during our hearing, and prior to our hearing last week, and made significant changes to the planting design to be much more native, including converting an acre of lawn to native meadow, two different types of native meadow. We do have a few cultivars in our plan. The only place we looked at cultivars were specifically related to safety issues along sidewalks and dormitory rooms, to avoid height issues with bedrooms. And a few were for disease resistance, specifically the elm tree. The, in our perennial area, we converted almost 100% over to native species. The meadows are in the slopes on the east side of the property, which include pollinator, wildflower meadow, which would be, if you want to point, Karina, it would be the bottom, down, down, down there. So that entire area over there is now wildflower meadow, the entire landform with some, some apple trees in it. And then the other section, if you go up to the east, perfect, that's another type of native meadow that is more in the grasses side to balance out any sort of pollinator or insect species that go with the apples. The reason for that type of meadow at that location relates to the activities of the school dealing with the apple trees themselves. The planting design in general did not change. The plants are in the same locations that they were. We just made significant changes to get more natives into the pallet. We also heard from the chairman about some discomfort about how close the parking was to the chapel. And as of, like, cut off the press today, we finally figured out a way where we could move that parking lot 18 feet to the south off of the chapel. And we have some sketch plans that we can share. Unfortunately, we don't have them digitally. Plan new mans on that parking area. The first two pages were our plan and a perspective as submitted. And the third and fourth pages of what's in front of you are plans showing the parking lot 18 feet further, so we're 24 feet off of the chapel, still in the same general area to avoid damaging the larger specimen trees that exist in the area. We are still intending to wrap a wall around the lot and put some plantings in to help buffer it, and to allow the chapel to stand and be seen architecturally. The plan on the board just shows how that parking lot looks shifted away from the chapel in the context of the entire site, and how it gives the chapel more, more room. That's the, sort of, the extent of the landscape changes.
Any other presentations tonight? I'll open up to the board for questions. Mr. Mills?
Thank you. So first, Karina, you mentioned that the other town departments haven't given any comments yet. We are expecting those shortly, I take it?
We received comments from the fire department at the, prior to the last meeting.
Are we expecting any others?
I am not unless there are...
Police?
Open Space Preservation Commission will be having a review letter forthcoming. No, we, no. We get submitted to the police department, the fire department, the town clerk, town council, recreation commission, the building department, zoning board of appeals, everyone. And the fire department had comments, and Open Space will have comments coming.
So for the, the new parking area that you moved, you mentioned the wall around it, how high do you think the wall's going to be?
At the, at the highest point, the wall, it's currently five feet, but we actually, we need to work with the arborists to kind of get it down. Our goal is to get it to four feet tall at its highest point, and then it will fade as the grade comes up on both sides to three feet. Our goal is to have the three feet to hide the headlights of any cars that might be parked in the lot, to diminish their visibility from Marlborough Road.
And then I assume the white-lined areas, snow storage to the west?
White, white-lined areas are for snow storage and for maneuverability within the parking area, so people don't hit the wall. So we're giving some room for people to back out of spaces and not actually hit the wall.
I still have a lot to go through.
It's a big set.
So, I mean, those are my initial questions. I know, I know I mentioned before about talking about the Vacris's garage there. I did walk up there the other day with my wife and the dog. I don't know if it really would make that big of a difference when I was walking there, because you are going to be turning to the right would be the biggest problem anyhow, so... But, just want to let you know that I had out there, I was checking it out, and it, I think your location is further up. So that might not be as an issue as I originally thought. Other than that, I think I'm good for now.
Mr. Stein?
Good evening. I was not at the previous hearing, but I did review the materials and I reviewed the draft minutes. And from what I could glean, it would seem that there's some waivers being requested under the Dover Amendment, and the Dover Amendment specifically states, like, you basically have to do this. It's a, it's a distinct need on the part of the institution. So if somebody could just explain that to me, I would appreciate it.
I can do that. Thanks for checking, that's a good question. We, at the last meeting, and maybe captured in the minutes, we talked about the history behind the, this project. And this, this is a significant project for us in that we're creating, we're solving a lot of problems that have been items that were hoping that this building will alleviate and solve for us in the long run. And one of those is life safety. So one of the reasons that we're bringing the students over from West Campus is not just because of the distance relative to the other dorms, it's because they're also crossing Route 85 every day to travel from the dorms to the dining hall, to travel from the dorms to the library, as I mentioned before, any other classes. So there's, there's definitely a life safety factor with 92 approximately students traveling to and from the main campus every day. The other, the other point was bringing the campus under one roof, really having the ability to have all the dorms without students crossing any traffic. So part of that plan is the cessation of the driveway as it passes along next to the Terriott Dorm. So we're, the idea here is that none of the students would have to cross any, any roads, even our interior roads as they move to and from the dining hall, for example, or any other classes throughout the campus. So, giving, I think, hopefully that answers your question. Those are the big ones. And the other one, too, is in the wintertime, we, our students are, are walking a lot further when it's really cold outside, walking to and from their dorms, oftentimes not as dressed in the appropriate warm clothing that probably should be, because they're in high school and they're, they're not doing that. But they, the point being is that that's also another factor, is that we're going to have the students closer from a life safety and just security and overall health standpoint.
Yep.
So, that's...
Okay, so that does beg the question, what you're going to do with the existing dorms?
That question came up last time, I believe you asked. And we do not know, but we have a committee that's looking at that. We know it's not going to be used for, we, we don't think it would, we know it's not going to be used for students, because we're not increasing the size of our campus. We're really just shifting our campus, the gravity of our campus to Maine. So, we have a committee, and that's the charge of the committee, but we haven't determined what that would be yet.
What's in front of the committee as far as options?
So some of the things that have been floated have been everything from really using the space to make a more, to enhance our summer program. Our summer program now is really not as robust as maybe it could be. So one of the things we were talking about was using the space on West to build a more robust summer camp, essentially. That we, we really, you don't think of us as having that now, because we just don't. So having something where there are more students in the summertime, perhaps sports-related camps, baseball, softball, soccer, what have you on West Campus is something we're talking about, but that's just for the summertime, so that's, that's an initial idea that's floated. But as far as the rest of the year, we haven't actually even gotten that far yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mrs. Luttrell?
Thank you. Love the wildflower meadows. And the addition of natives is great. It's better than the last time. But a lot of the natives are native to North America, not native to this area, not native to New England. And I'd be looking for native New England to attract, you know, native pollinators.
Yeah, we, we know, we have a few, like, regional natives that are more like the east coast. Some of that was to relate to the, the current palette and view of campus from the Marlborough roadside. So we kind of did our initial pass-through to make all the big changes we could make. And now we have a second round, which is a lot more difficult to do, to keep with the, the aesthetic of that view, and with what we're hearing for, for the requests. So it's not, a lot of the substitutions now aren't as simple, and they come into situations where we might need evergreen, and the substitution is a non-evergreen and things like that. So it takes more time than, than the week that we had to put together the drawing set for the second round. So I'm not saying we, we will not continue to look at them, but we do have, the next round gets a lot harder. So there'll be some, I'm sure we'll have more discussions about this as we go along, and we'll keep looking. But there are going to be some points where we, we will struggle to find a straight native that will fit all of the conditions of the sites that, that we have. But as you can tell with what we've done so far, our intention is to be as close to that goal as possible.
Yes, thank you. Very good. That's all I have.
Mrs. Houlihan?
So, thank you. It's nice to have a, a team come in that, that heard us the first time and, and took changes, so thank you for that. So I wanted to focus two things on the egress, so the new, the new departure onto School Street. So, would just to love to understand the stormwater. If someone can talk to you how the flow of water will not impact School Street, and, because I got the impression through the fuss in O'Neill, again, I'm not an expert on erosion control, but I just, I do know, after being near a development, they said it wouldn't happen, and it still did. So I just want to try and understand how you're controlling for the runoff coming out of that, and particularly in winter with snow removal, how that will be covered.
Maybe that's a little easier. This is a very crudely marked up plan that's in the plan set, this is a utility plan. The magenta lines here are drainage areas. Most of the runoff from the, the school building and the surrounding areas are kind of collected on-site. We have a couple of roof recharge areas. A larger recharge area here that's going to collect some of the roof runoff, as well as some of the runoff from the paved way, a majority of it. There's a bioretention area in this area here, which takes some overland flow from the driveway area, intercepts that, puts us back into that recharge area. There is a, a bit of a slope on our egress road, and so what we've did, what we've done is we provided a couple of water quality inlets and a connection into the, into the town municipal system here. We looked at swaling the area, we looked at, you know, treatment swales and, and things like that. Or if it's just for that reason, during winter areas, we have a crowded roadway, gutters, curbs, and a collection system to do that. Most of the piping system has been designed to accommodate a 100-year design storm. So anything that, the small bit of, that comes down this driveway area is collected, treated, and then put back into the stormwater system. Originally, we had a, some of the earlier concepts, we had another recharge system down in this area here that would recharge some of the, the stormwater back into the, into the groundwater, and any type of overflow would go this way. But when we put the whole system together and looked at it, we actually had to decrease the School Street from a, from a peak rate and a volume standpoint. So we decided to eliminate that recharge area and just provide this positive drainage here. Hopefully that answered your question.
Yeah, no, I just have a question. Has Mr. Morris stepped out?
Yeah, he'll be right back.
Okay. I think it's more of a question of DPW to make sure that our stormwater systems on School Street are actually functioning and working. So to make sure our street infrastructure can support that overflow, I think would be important for us to, to understand. Yes. So thank you for, thank you for that.
And like I did say, there is a overall decrease to that, there's a, there's a catch basin system very close proximity here. There's actually a decrease in the amount of stormwater that currently gets there from our site post-development.
No, I appreciate it. I think it goes from zero now. So even though it's a decrease from what you've graded and how you've kind of included in your, it'll now increase because you're making an egress and a road, so...
Correct, but just, just to kind of reiterate, what we did was is we used that area as what we call a design point pre-development. So we looked at what was getting into that catch basin in that system from our site pre-development.
Pre-development.
And then what we do is we, we take a look at it post-development, and we try to either match or decrease that. And the, and the system that, the connection point here, we do have a decrease in both volume and peak rate from pre-development conditions to the post-development condition. So by all means, we'll reach out to the DPW, hoping to get some comments, but I just wanted to let you know that was the premise of our design, so...
And just for clarity of that, so that's purely like calculations? And just for clarity of that, so that's purely like calculations?
Correct.
So I, I, I think that the one thing that, and I understand math is math, but I also understand like a hundred-year storms we've been getting every twenty years, not a hundred years. So I think trying to make sure is just our, you know, my obligation as planning board. So I just want to make sure that works. So thank you very much on that answer. The next piece was on the traffic flow. So I know Fussin' O'Neill had asked about that with regard to the, the, the number of parking trips. Reckon, recognizing this is just, it's a dormitory. So the, the response that you provided specific to the parking, not the parking, this traffic study, is that it's, it really, you're not increasing the student capacity. What I would like to better understand is who will use this during the day? So this parking, additional parking area that you're putting in in the egress, so on a day-to-day basis, not move-in, not departure, like who will be utilizing that area?
Want me to say and then you correct me if I'm wrong?
Yeah.
Okay. So on the east side of the building, the right-hand side of the building, the intention is that that is for faculty and staff and parents who are coming to visit, people who are already part of the community. And that the west side of the building, oh, thanks, Brian, from Marlborough, so that, yeah, where Brian pointed is that, so the flow in and out on School Street is supposed to be internal to the community. The, the direction of flow for visitors now is one-hundred percent to Marlborough Road, where right now, the majority of the visitor spaces are in the east side of the building, which makes flow go on the School Street. So we're trying to have in, in community, people who should know the neighborhood and be part of the community, be on the east side, visitors on the west side. I am sure that there'll be the odd parent that drops off or picks up for hockey or something like they currently do at the Athletic Center, which is just off the top of the page to the right a little, Brian? Yeah, right about there. But the idea is that the visitor flow moves to the west side completely, where right now it's through traffic, School Street and Marlborough Road. So it's sort of clarifying and separating and trying to keep people who don't know where they're going on Marlborough Road.
Yep. And just a, a question on the, so the additional parking that you're adding in there now, so your lot, currently your faculty parks there, and those obviously who walk to work that live on-site. So are those extra spaces, are, are they intended to be used? I mean, visiting parents, but I mean.
About twenty-four of those spaces are for in-dorm faculty residences.
Oh, that's right.
And the remainder are for handling the flow and then be having a little bit of surplus now to avoid people parking on School Street during events or, or other larger gatherings. We, we, I'm speaking for the school, would rather have those people parking on the campus and not on a relatively narrow road. So that's, that's why there's a delta between what we're asking for and the, in the actual twenty-four parking spaces for the in-dorm faculty.
And my final question. On West Campus now, those people that we're expecting on the twenty-fourth will be at, now on School Street, where they used to actually use Main Street. And so the impact from that, even just from a mathematical calculation, so I know you, you suggested that a traffic study doesn't need to be done in conjunction with this, but just trying to understand what the impact is, how many trips do they take a day, and, and what is the impact to School Street? I do think it's important for the, the residents of School Street.
Yeah, we can count, I mean, twelve units and eighty-seven percent of our faculty live on campus. So really, the majority of the people, just backing up a little bit, the majority of the people that really park in that parking lot every day are staff. So I think that's just one important piece of the understanding of who uses that lot. And of the staff, the majority of them actually enter that lot from School Street. Just by knowing and looking out every day from my office, which sits next, adjacent to that, knowing whose cars are in that lot, and which direction they're coming from and where they live. I know that's not a formal study, but it is important to know that it's really the staff because almost ninety percent of our faculty are walking to work every day, which also means, to your question, the twelve faculty units that'll be part of this future ninety thousand square foot building will be faculty residents who will primarily be parked all day because they're walking to and from, just like the students are walking to and from the main building. Most are, a lot of our faculty are coaching. That means they're coaching on campus or for away games from time to time. And then the other obligations they have are also on campus. And our assistant head of school is nodding, so I think that's, that's correct. So it's essentially, we do think that the faculty shifting from West to this building will have a relatively de minimis effect on traffic in the, in the traditional sense where someone is coming and going every day during rush hour. They'll be doing errands and, and leaving and coming and going on the weekends, but the majority of them during the weekdays will be staying put. So I think that's important to note.
Thank you. That's all I had.
The, I think you said this properly or clearly, but the orchard over there is still going to be an orchard and the meadow?
So, so yeah, the meadow under the orchard is not a wildflower meadow, so its mowing timing is more in, in line with being able to harvest the trees. A wildflower meadow, you do not want to be mowing during tree harvest. So we're trying to separate the two uses, which is why it's not wildflower meadow everywhere. So it would be meadow, it would be then be mown very close to when the harvest occurs, and then people will be in there. And then you let it grow into meadow again. So the meadow, the meadow underneath the, the orchard trees is more like a hayfield timing, a little later than hayfield timing. And the wildflower meadow is much later, like after frost later.
And would you be cutting down any more trees than you would have before you introduced these meadows?
No, in fact, the majority of the apple trees that are over there, there's also like a fourteen-inch cherry over there that is in tremendously poor shape. The apple trees are pretty much gone. The last storm, the last winter took out three or four of them. So our thought is that with this project going on, we should actually replenish the orchard and start over. They're, they're so old, they're beyond salvage, if that, if that answers your question.
Right.
Yeah, we're not taking extra che, extra trees just to put the orchard in. We're sort of taking the orchard trees out to put the orchard in.
Mr. Mills?
So just, I know a lot of orchards now, they're tied to wires and they're really close together and they're short. You think that type of orchard?
Spindel orchard? No, we were thinking traditional row of trees, which would also help with a screen, that they're low branching trees, which would also help with the way the grade works, with, would help scale the building from School Street. So a spindel orchard, which is the one on the, on the, on the posts and the wires, would not be as effective of a screen, because they're actually clipped to be more along the wire instead of a big tree mass. Thank you.
So just, we just got the Fussin' O'Neill letter tonight, first look at it. There's a section in here that talks about signage, and you, you want to wait until you start construction in two thousand and twenty-one. We'll have to look at that. I'm sure we'll, we'll agree with that, but we just have to figure out a way to make it a condition. Yeah?
We don't have a signage consultant hired yet.
Right.
And we are going to do that closer to the time of the, the building getting ready for construction.
Yeah, yeah. Usually we wrap everything up with the site plan, but this will be a, something that we try to do and also do it so that it's not a big deal, not a big deal for it. And then, um, one of these are waivers, waiver requests, some where you're referring to the Dover Amendment. So we'll, we'll be taking a look at that. We want to make sure we handle those properly for you and for the town. And we have a good understanding of how the Dover Amendment applies. You know, make sure that we're consistent with that. So, you know, this revised plan, you just worked this up for the parking near the chapel. Do you like, do you like the plan?
I personally think both work. I think giving the chapel more breadth is better for the chapel. I think it causes us, me, some anxiety about how the wall works, how it sits in the grade, which I think is resolvable with landscaping and some earthwork and some work with some arborists. So I think give, giving the chapel some room is the right long-term move. And we just have to figure out which is why it took so long to actually put them together, is we're still trying to get all the details right. So we think it's doable and we think it's, gives the chapel a little more room to be the chapel and the presence it's been.
Yeah, that was my, my point, to, to have some separation.
Yes.
So that's good. This island here, is that just going to be grass?
The intention right now is that it's grass, because directly across from that island as you drive up the turnaround is the historic architectural element of the arch gateway. So we want to leave that clear, a clear sightline to that. So we're, our trees mostly frame the left and right of that, that island. We do intend to use a little bit of soil to raise the grade of that island, so it's not quite so flat, which will help with some screening from around campus of the parking, just like we're using the wall on the south and west side. We're going to use a little bit of landform in that island to try and kind of downplay the cars.
Yeah, I was thinking more of keeping it, you know, if you said it was going to stay grass, that you would be continuing to, I think you put the tents there, the temporary tents after the football games.
Not in the inside circle.
No.
Right across in the circle?
Yeah, just to the east.
Right behind the, the goalposts.
Yeah.
Can you point by the goalposts? Right over, yeah, right above, over there. And
that, that is also the long-term intention, is that actually area will be a level area for some event staging.
Yeah, yeah. It always works very well, I think.
It actually will have a little more room than it currently has because the road goes away. So there'll be a little more green there, a little softer. So the view from, from Marlborough Road should also be softer going up to the buildings with the road kind of contained.
Well, I hope our, our comments, you know, these site plans, they tend to be an evolving thing where we work together and listen to different opinions about things. And I hope that, you know, the comments from the board, you're, seems like you're, you know, you're really making it better.
Mm-hmm.
Not necessarily because we said it, but.
You get challenged as to rethink that.
Yeah.
Agreed. All went through that exercise again, and I think we came up with something better.
Yeah, yes. That's good to see. Okay, well, we'll, yeah, Mr. Stein?
So the language that you're requesting a waiver from the stormwater pollution prevention plan, it's not really a waiver because you are going to.
It's just a delay until we have a contractor.
Okay.
On board, which is still two years away.
Yeah. I'm just a little wary of using the word waiver for something like that. I would not use that language.
Anything else from the board? Open up to the public. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission. We did meet last week and had just picked up the new plans right before our meeting, and we're greatly surprised and encouraged by the changes that have already been made. The wildflower meadows, really, really nicely done. I note that we're going to meet again this week and sort of go through the plant list a little more thoroughly and have a formal letter, but some of the, you know, the, the cultivars and the not native to New England, we use gobotany as our resource. If it's native to New England, we're more comfortable. We also look at some of the directly abutting states that are in our eco-zone. But our recommendations are more science-based, and we know that native plants can be attractive landscape plants. It's a new area that many landscape architects are just becoming more well-versed in. We're not landscape architects. We don't ever plan to desire to plan, but we will make recommendations. And if we can find a plant that we know of, but normally we don't, we think that the landscape architects know, you know, their plants and their needs the best. But I did mention to you out in the hallway, and I just thought I'd mention this here in front of the planning board, is that this leads, the fact that you're a school and you're doing this, you know, native planting on a scale that is somewhat significant, plus you have other land. We are, how we ended up here with our native pollinator, native plant initiative, was basically through the work we're doing with Professor Gagir, who has been doing research. And we're very fortunate that one of his research sites is here in Southborough at our conservation land, Breakneck Hill. And because of that, we have the opportunity to maybe get him over to your campus to do an inventory and to help work with you. And maybe you can connect us with your student science, even your summer school plans, because he has a bee ecology citizen science project. But even more importantly, he has a, he and a team of faculty and students at WPI, were the recipients of a one-point-two million-dollar National Science Foundation grant, allowing them to work with high school teachers to motivate the integrative teaching of computer science and biology in high school curricula. That's an add-on bonus we can bring to you guys to try to help, you know, make maybe some of your plantings be more meaningful to your students. I get goosebumps because I feel that, you know, we're very proud of the work we've been able to do here in town and that, that's something that's a school of St. Mark's reputation would really want to be a part of. And if we can help, you know, we're also looking to do it with our own school students, but if we can help facilitate that. And one of the really cool things is we have conservation land he's in, you know, he's researching. We have a golf course, we have a farm. And if we could have a school campus looking at the differences in how, what you do now, and then making some small changes, what you can have later, that's really important science, and it's nationally recognized. So I'm really excited about this. So thank you.
I've been on the board for a while, so when you do, do these other projects, I've, I've usually asked the question, and it seems as though you try to be honest, but I am wide open to you exaggerating or even lying about the answer. How, how does this new dormitory compare to the Groton School?
Yeah, you should move from that one, Brian.
Need a microphone.
It's, it's better. Well, I think I could answer it, and we have a lot of competition throughout the area. So without saying the exact school, I could say that it's going to bring, it's going to bring our residential life experience to a new level. And we have many committees, one of which is just dedicated to the residential life experience for our students. And so one of the things we talked about at the last meeting was how much time and effort we spent as a committee working on the programmatic side of this, with Sam's help and many others. The committee is made up of a lot of our educators, and Goody Clancy has listened to us. And so we've designed the residential dorm, and we've thought about where, all the different aspects that are important about where the faculty housing is. It's not just faculty housing in the dorm. It's also faculty housing that can accommodate the faculty as their families grow. But then also they have an interior door so that they can have a sightline to the hallway to be able to access and see the students. And so all those things were considered. So I think what we'll be able to do is have a new dorm that helps us really to ensure our own sustainability, because we want to be here in Southborough for the long term. And to, this is another piece of it, which to answer your question, the icing on the cake is not just life safety, but it's also about long-term sustainability of St. Mark's. And this really brings us to that next level in terms of whether we're, this storm is as good as Groton, it's going to be as good or better than many other schools. So we're excited about that, and we think it's going to bring us to the next level and allow us to stay healthy as a boarding school environment with our seventy-five percent boarding students on campus right now, that continues to stay that way. So I hope that, we, I think that's an honest answer. I know you said maybe people lie or have done that before, but we really do believe it's going to be one of the best in-class dormitories among our independent school boarding network. So, and that's the truth.
And that's the truth. Okay, we'll go with that.
We do.
It's good to hear that you keep, you know, you keep an eye on your competition and, and your rival.
Right. That's true.
Well, you know, we. Well, um, you know, we, we, we got these comments, we're making good progress, do you feel the same way?
Absolutely.
So, uh, we'll continue the public hearing. The approval period for the, uh, major site plan, uh, ends on, um, the ni, uh, October 19th, and our next meeting is October 21st. So, you need to, uh, request, if you'd like, a, an extension, uh, of the approval period beyond, uh, October 21st. And the approval period for the lower impact development is November 18th. So, we have a, a draft, uh, we have a, a request for continuation and extension, uh, here, that, uh, we usually extend the approval period to the Friday after the, our next meeting, when we would schedule the, the continued hearing, which would be October 25th. That allows us, if there's a problem, to advertise and still have a, um, a hearing before the approval period ends. Or, if you wanted to keep it simple, and just extend the approval period for the site plan, uh, to the same, uh, date as the special permit for lower impact development of November 18th, or somewhere in between, you're welcome to do that. But, we would continue this, if you want, if you're ready to come back on the 21st of October.
I think we'd definitely be ready to come back on the 21st, we can touch base with Karina. Uh, we did just get the comments, we were going over them in the, in the hall, uh, we'll put a, an appropriate response to that, uh, provide you a little bit more details on that parking area, um, hopefully, maybe get a chance to meet with the DPW, whether I do that through you, Karina, or, or do that on my own, maybe we can kind of shake the bushes and get some of the, the town departments. But again, if anybody, if I say something wrong, someone will throw something at me, but I think it would be appropriate to at least match up, uh, the deadline with the lid, with the site plan for now, um, and then again, if we need to adjust that later on, but I, I do think that makes sense. Some of the issues are a little bit different, but a little bit the same, and if someone's gonna be writing, uh, you know, two different decisions, it kind of makes sense to kind of be doing them at the same time, and if...
So, uh, the way this is worded, it would continue, uh, the hearing to October 21st, and the approval period would be extended, instead of what we have typed here, to October 25th, we would say November 18th.
I think that'd be appropriate, yep.
So, is that your request?
It is.
Yes, that is our request.
Mr. Mills?
I have to follow the, abs, to request, that is our request, uh...
So, before, before we continue the hearing, we have to approve your request to extend the approval period. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we continue the public, uh, accept the applicant's request to continue the decision.
No, to, yeah, the approval period.
The approval period to, uh, November 18th, 2019.
Motion's been made to contin, uh, to, uh, extend the approval period for the major site plan to November 18th.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and any discussion, all in favor? Okay, now we're able to continue the public hearing. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, we're not gonna adjust this time for the update that Mimi's gonna give at the next meeting, too.
Oh, that's right, so maybe seven, five, seven, ten?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we continue the public hearing for 25 Marlborough Roads, uh, St. Mark's, uh, Dormitory for 7:05 PM on, uh, s, October 21st, 2019. And also, continue the public hearing for, oh, sorry, that was for major site plan approval.
Yep.
And continue the public hearing for, uh, lower impact development, 25 Marlborough Roads, St. Mark's Dormitory for, uh, 7:10 PM.
Second.
On the same day.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, any discussion, all in favor? So, we've continued both hearings to the 21st.
Thank you very much.
7:05 and 7:10, and thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, now, uh, Rob, uh, you ha, uh, have to sign as the, are you, are you, you're the applicant?
Yes.
So... Yeah. At least you won't be sitting around for a co... Okay, next item on the agenda is, uh, discussion. Open space monitoring report, Karina.
All right, um, if you recall, let me just put this down. All right, as part of fiscal year 19, um, we had some funding for, uh, the continued open space monitoring program that we've been working on, and, um, just to recap, I, um, solicited some proposals. Lucas Environmental was selected, um, they were able to complete the work in the tam, timeframe required at, um, you know, what was a proper fee for the work. Ten's locations were selected, uh, we worked with Open Space Preservation Commission and Freddie, um, to kind of pick those locations, and then, uh, we had a review meeting, once a draft report was performed. Uh, Joe Orzel, he's a senior wetland scientist with, um, Lucas Environmental, he performed the field monitoring and also prepared the report. Um, the monitoring form that was used was, uh, based on Mass Autobahn's template from the prior year, which was tweaked, um, to include some disclosures as far as, you know, this findings are based on what is best seen, doesn't necessarily include all, um, interactions or encroachments or, um, underground concerns, mostly based on what you see in the field from a sidewalk. So, a review was done with Thad and Freddie, and, um, the report was tweaked again, uh, there were a few typos and such, and kind of some odd references to some of the locations, only because I'm still relatively new, but we ironed them out, and they'll be, um, revised based on any other comments, so we didn't have to go through a whole nother iteration. So, this is the report, I'll let Joe talk about the rest of what's in the report.
Thank you for that introduction, you...
Oh, sorry, stole your thunder, I have to stop talking so much. Sorry.
Well, no, it was great, 'cause you covered some of the things that I was going to talk about, and, um, what I'd like to do is, um, maybe quickly go over, uh, each of the sites that, uh, I looked at, um, I don't wanna take too much of your time, you know, it's getting late, um, and maybe mention a few highlights, and, uh, then to get into some recommendations, um, at the end, and certainly, if you have any questions, uh, please let me know. We, uh, we did select 10 sites, um, as Karina had mentioned, uh, the first site was Brewer Estates. Here's one of the typos that was mentioned, uh, that should not read Braun Lane, that should be Brewer Lane. You're probably scratching your head, saying, "Where the heck is Braun Lane?" And that's at 244, two, and 246 Boston Road. This is a, a site that, um, has a combination, uh, narrow easement around the perimeter, and also a, a larger easement, uh, at the back of the lot. In particular, this site, uh, what, what stood out at this site was the invasives, um, probably the, the, overall, the worst site, uh, that I looked at out of these 10, uh, as far as invasives, uh, overall. In general, the narrow easements tended to have, uh, more invasive issues, uh, overall. On this particular site, it was both the, the narrow easements and the, the larger, uh, uh, easement area, it's just, uh, uh, very dense invasive, uh, species.
Invasives from the standpoint that they're recent, or do you think they've been there for a long?
No, they've been there, they've been there a long time.
Okay.
Very well-established, uh, invasive species, particularly, uh, in the, the back part of the lot, uh, where some of the trees were actually overgrown to, to such an extent by, uh, bittersweet that they were being pulled down, um, almost impossible to walk through in many locations, uh, due to primarily, at this site, uh, bittersweet, but also, multiflora rose. Thank you. If you go through, there are a few photos, um, in the report. Uh, page three, you can see, uh, photo two. Here's an example of some of the, uh, bittersweet growing over branches and, and pulling things down. I am on, uh, in Brewer Estates, uh, looking at the photos. Yep, so photo three, or photo two, sorry. One of the other, uh, things that stood out at this site in particular, uh, was the, how narrow some of the easements were, if you, if you look at picture, uh, number six, you can see that, I believe that's the property line stake, and the stone wall, and the easement is the area in between. One of the, one of the described uses of this is, is walking trails, um, between, between the width and the, the amount of invasives, it'd be very difficult to, to use that as a walking trail. Uh, going on to site number two, uh, Samaran Village, and that's at, uh, 28 and, and 30 Boston Road. As far as, uh, this site goes, the primary, uh, issue on this site was the, uh, number of, uh, brush piles that had been, um, deposited in, in the site, uh, internally, um, apparently from, uh, surrounding properties. Overall, the, uh, invasives in the site were not, uh, were not too bad. Third site was Leeds Way, off Middle Road. This site, uh, probably one of the, uh, nicer open space areas that I looked at, as far as, uh, the condition, um, of vegetation, uh, mature, mature, uh, forested area, uh, diverse vegetation, uh, relatively few invasive species. The, the one area where there, uh, was noticeable invasive species was along, uh, an easement, I believe it was an AT&amp;T easement, um, uh... And so, that's a potential, uh, area where invasives could, uh, move into the site, uh, in the future. Uh, one other point that, uh, recall on that site is, I don't believe that, uh, the actual open space was, uh, indicated on the site plan for the site. It was described, uh, in a document as running from the eastern wetland boundary to, uh, the road, which I forget the road here, Parkerville Road, um, but I don't believe it was shown on the, uh, on the actual site plan, so it was kind of, uh, drawn in on the, um, plan that was, uh, submitted, uh, to the board.
I just wanna add to that, officially, I think on the plans and in the decision was called pres, preservation area, as opposed to open space area. Natural preservation area.
Yeah. Fourth site was Laheia Estates, at 74 and 76 Marlborough Road. This is another, uh, perimeter easement. Typical of, of some of these perimeter easements, um, you do have some, uh, encroachment, um, up to the, uh, the stone wall property line, as far as, uh, yards extending to the stone wall, landscaping activity, mowing. Uh, the fifth site was Heritage Crossing. Uh, in general, uh, invasive species were not too bad there, there were some around the perimeter, you can see a photograph, uh, photograph number one. Uh, it shows a patch of knotweed, um, coming in, uh, right at the cul-de-sac. That certainly is something that could extend, uh, further, uh, if not, uh, addressed. But interior in the forest, or in the wooded area, there was relatively little, uh, invasives at this site. Uh, some encroachment, as far as some brush cutting, uh, under-story cutting. Yep, uh, shrub, the shrubs were cut out, uh, shrubs were, were cut, but the trees were left, yep. And that can be seen in pictures three and four, yep.
Now, was that marked, were there little open space markers on the trees on that particular?
Well, um, I think there was, I do believe there was one, um, near the, or one or two near the cul-de-sac, um, but I didn't, don't recall seeing any other ones. One of my recommendations has to do with, with marking, so... Uh, the sixth area was, uh, Edgewood, Edgewood Crossing, Nathan Stone Lane. Uh, and this is a combination of, uh, uh, perimeter easement, uh, and, uh, some, uh, parcels. As can be seen here, uh, again, there are issues, uh, with dumping of brush, um, primarily along the edge of the easements. There's also, uh, if you look at photo three, a lot of, uh, brush and material has been pushed over the, there's a retaining wall along Nathan Stone Road, um, and I think people are just dumping over that retaining wall, there's a, a large pile of debris there. Brush, not, not debris. The seventh area was Edgewood, Edgewood Estates, Wells Lane. And again, uh, some areas of, uh, brush piles, but in general, uh, not too much encroachment in the site, and the invasives also were not, uh, too bad at this site. One of the things that we tried to do this year, uh, was to document, uh, quantify a little bit more than previous year, the, uh, level of invasive species at the site. So, we just gave it a numerical ranking, one, two, or three, one being little, minor, two, moderate, and three, uh, heavy, heavy invasive species cover, just to, uh, try and give a little more information on that. Uh, the eighth area was Liberty Estates, uh, which... The eighth area was Liberty Estates, which includes a number of streets and both perimeter easement and parcels. Again, as in general in many of the other sites, a lot of brush pile, yard debris along the edge of the easements. The parcel, I think it's parcel A, really has a nice, nice property. There's a nice, very scenic pond on there, a trail that obviously people are using, and The ninth area was Hidden Meadow, and that should read Hidden Meadows, and then the actual street is Hidden Meadow Lane. One of the more unique things about this property is that a part of the easement is a nice open meadow, wildflower and grass meadow. And I think it was, you know, a great idea to allow annual mowing of that to maintain it as a meadow. You can see when you're at the site that portions of the meadow, portions that used to be meadow have now grown into white pines, and if not maintained, it would just, the pines would grow in and take over that whole area. And the last area, 10th area, was Pine Ridge Estates, Hubley Lane, and this borders the previous site. And again, it's a perimeter easement and open space parcel. Relatively light invasive species, and the encroachment in this one, there were patches, if you look at photos four and six, you can see, you know, yard debris, yard waste and debris piles in a few different locations, which is pretty common at all the sites. So as far as common issues, certainly invasive vegetation is present at all the sites to different degrees. Encroachment primarily, yard waste, brush piles, to a lesser extent, I think, landscaping up to the edge of the property line, but that certainly is present in spots. It was also interesting that several of the property owners came out when I was out and inquiring what I was doing out there. Letters were sent out and hand-delivered, so they were aware that I was coming. But probably 75% of the people I spoke to were not aware that there was an easement on their property. So I think it's an opportunity possibly for maybe some form of outreach or education as far as letting people know. It seemed like they were very receptive to maintaining open space on the property in general for the people I spoke to. Some of them were a little bit anxious that they might be getting in trouble for doing something that they weren't supposed to do, but I told them I wasn't the enforcement person, I was just there monitoring. And the other common issue and recommendation is requiring some kind of permanent markers for the easements. In a lot of locations, it was very difficult to know where the easement was. I mean, sometimes you had a stone wall, sometimes you didn't. If you have a stone wall, you can get a pretty good idea, but stone walls come and go, they're not always continuous. So there's a certain amount of guesswork going on whether or not some encroachment is actually in the easement or not in the easement. So I think moving forward, requiring some kind of permanent marker, and one that I had mentioned in the report, would be something like the Fino Survey Monuments, which is the iron rod with the marker on top, colored marker on top, which are relatively inexpensive, relatively permanent, and they do show up, you know, if it's not totally overgrown, they do show up when you're in the field. As far as other recommendations, I think it's a great effort that the town is doing to monitor these open spaces, get an idea of their status, so we recommend continuing doing that. Would also recommend that the monitoring reports be added to the deed research database as a single location where all the information could be accessed. As far as number of sites being monitored, going, we would, ideally, you'd like to monitor everything every year, but I think that's probably not very realistic. Potentially, it may be more realistic to do half the sites every year so that you're hitting every site every two years. One of the other recommendations is that as part of the next funding allotment, to consider creating an enforcement guidance document so that when people are out doing the monitoring, they know the priority of the types of encroachments that are being looked at. You know, is mowing to the property line a higher priority than, you know, a brush pile? And that might just help prioritize and quantify the encroachments a little bit more. And as I mentioned, recommending permanent markers. And as I also had mentioned, recommending that the, that future easements be designed to accommodate their proposed use. So if something is proposed to be used as a recreational trail or a footpath, three feet's a little bit, probably a little bit narrow, depending on the actual location. Some of those areas, the stone walls are three feet wide, and you know, you're not, whereas the edge of the easement relative to the stone wall. So in a nutshell, that was the review, and if you have any questions, I'd be certainly happy to answer.
Questions? This is discussion, so just go right at it. Mr. Mills?
Yeah, so first of all, thank you for joining us, appreciate it. I'm glad you're able to get out there and find most of the locations.
Right.
To great detail. So the questions I had, like you mentioned, doing some proactive outreach to the people. Be curious if you had any recommendations on how to do that, to notify people in your experience, how that's done and how it's been successful in other places.
Well, I can't really speak to how it's been done in other places, but I would think possibly some kind of an informational email to property owners, just that these easements exist and what their purpose is, and that they are open space. Maybe enough to get them to check if they have an easement on their property, or realize they have an easement on their property.
Yeah. And then also on the markers, are you suggesting that we go out and put new markers out there for where there aren't ones?
My suggestion, I was going forward.
Going forward, that makes sense.
Yeah.
And then I'm curious about the invasives, right? So it sounds like most of the, well, the big invasive areas were, they've probably been around for a long time. The Brewer Estate one specifically, I mean, that's only been put in the last.
Yeah.
Six years, four years or so? And I'm guessing that when that was originally designated, it was already.
It was, yes. That's been like that for a long time. It's not, it's happened recently.
So is that typical, what you've seen in other locations when you've looked at properties? Or?
Yeah, well, I think, you know, generally, the invasives are more common along the edges of the woods where there's more sunlight getting in. So on some of these narrower easements, I think it's likely that invasives are, have increased from what they were prior. On some of the larger parcels, the larger areas, right along the edge, you're going to get some invasives encroaching, but in these ones that are relatively invasive-free in the middle, you know, they're likely to stay that way for quite a while unless something really allows an incursion into the center of the area.
So, and I guess I kind of wonder how we balance between, okay, it's supposed to be open space, but now they've got all these invasives in there. Are we supposed to encourage the property owner to go in and clean out the invasives, or just let it be open space and let nature take its course?
Probably depends on how the open space is designated, as far as what the use, designated Certainly, you're going to have impacts to habitat value when you get dense invasive cover. You're going to have a decrease in vegetative diversity. So it's a good question as far as, you know, what's the balance? Do you have property owners going out and, you know, hopefully following the instructions on the herbicide application?
And then do we have to have guidelines for every single property owner who abuts the open space to say, this is what you should be doing, and this is what you shouldn't be doing? And we have to customize within each development that comes before us, you know, that this is what we're going to say? I'm just curious, have you seen that in other locations, or is that, I'm just?
Yeah, I know occasionally, invasive management is required as part of a permit. It's generally not a short-term thing.
Right.
You know, you're, it's usually, well, years to get on top of it, and then you've got to maintain. So it's, I think it's, it can be difficult from a permitting standard, and probably from an enforcement standard too, to require someone to be applying herbicide. But it can certainly, it can certainly be used as part of a permit as far as an initial treatment and hopefully knock some things back.
Yeah. Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Just thank you, it's very comprehensive and nice job, thank you.
Thank you. I was just going to say the same. I know you waited patiently for three hours to present this, so we appreciate that. I think this is really informative. It was interesting going through this, seeing like one development where the planning board had required granite markings and certain things that developer just didn't do.
And again, I didn't see them.
Right, right. They could be there.
Could be there, it could be overgrown, but I did, you know, I did look for those in those areas where they were required.
So that's a question to the planning board, is when we do have something like that, that's the building inspector's job. So if something like this notices it, we could send the building inspector to say, did you do this as per our requirement?
Yeah, and I know there was, was the one off White Bagley, I don't think it was Ukraine, I think it was Jennifer Bernie went out and verified that the markers were in before everything, so that, I mean, we have, we have caught on to some things that have gotten missed in the past, but recently, you know, we have been making sure, hey, are they out there? And even the open space committee at times have been kind enough to tell us, didn't see anything, or, you know, give us a little hint.
Joe, this is really excellent, excellent report, and, you know, you wrapped it all up within the fiscal year, which was, you know, the requirement.
It was a bit of a challenge, but.
Yeah. I read here where each one of these took a day, pretty much a day.
Yeah.
So, and to have that done, you know, and you mentioned funding in here, these reports, almost all of this is taken out of the planning board's hide.
Yeah.
Yeah, we try to manage our budget and have, you know, predictability about, you know, the consultants that we can bring on during the fiscal year. So seems like every year we wind up, no one else will pay for these things, and everyone wants it, and we wind up taking it out of our budget. But it's something that we've been able to do, and you can just see the program's expanding the quality, you know, I mean, it wasn't, a couple of years ago, we didn't even have a monitoring report form.
Yeah.
Now we have a good form, and we have good consultants to come in and use the form and do this great work.
And I think it builds on itself also.
Yeah, yeah, and now you get the neighbors involved. Anyone else? Tim?
Just an observation, in terms of engaging property owners, it seems to me that the likely time for these to fall through the cracks is when the property changes hands. So if you could hook into, you know, when, you know, like the first tax bill after a property gets sold, might be a way to remind the property owners of something that their attorneys probably didn't bother with, or that, you know, the developer dropped, or, you know, all the other ways that people just don't know.
Anything else? Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the master plan update.
We met on last Wednesday, September 18th, and MAPC, three of the consultants were there, and we discussed the community visioning forum, which as I mentioned earlier, is on November 7th, looking for input from the community. We are meeting again on October 10th and again on October 23rd, and we hope to have a booth at Heritage Day to publicize the efforts of the master plan and what that all, what it's all about, and to publicize the community visioning forum.
I have to reemphasize that Mimi is doing an amazing job as chairwoman.
Thanks, thanks a lot, Mrs. Latrell. Excellent. Anybody else, anything else on that? Next item on the agenda, the business properly before the board, planner's report. Karina?
Okay. All right. Couple of things, I can do it quickly. Um.
Casey's, my assistant Casey's last day is tomorrow. Um, she was a great asset to our department. Unfortunately, um, she was offered a position very close to her home, uh, which was just too tempting to take with, um, financial and professional opportunity for her. Um, so we wish her well. We have, uh, um, uh, the conservation agent and I are going to take her to lunch tomorrow at Morrow's Cafe for, uh, a final goodbye. But, uh, she seems like the kind of person who will keep in touch and answer questions if we have anything, um, outstanding. So, um, I sent an email out to many of the townhouse staff to let them know and to other departments that tomorrow's her last day to wish her well. So, um, and that being said, we posted an ad for the position on Mass Municipal Association for Business Administrator One, um, and on the town website. And I made sure to emphasize in the ad that, um, we're looking for someone with planning, experience, background, degree. Because I think it made a big difference in, um, how the person acclimated to the position very quickly. Um, and also the desire to be, um, invested in the department, uh, in a planning approach. Um, not just administrative, but on projects and, um, applications and interacting with the public. Hopefully, if I have time this week, if not next week, I'll be posting it on Indeed, um, to get a good, well-rounded, um, ad out on the street. Uh, I just wanna know that, um, uh, my annual review was due in July. Um, Dawn and I worked on it, um, very similar to last year's, uh, with some updates on the goals. If anybody wants to see that, I have a copy and I can send it to you if you'd like. Um, but we had to get it in by today in order to get on the next Personnel Board meeting in October. So this year I'm only three or four months late, as opposed to last year. Okay. Um, Stone Brook Village, uh, there was a tree requirement to be, um, installed somewhere in town. We're working on that. Um, that's another thing Dawn was assisting me. Um, there's a location at the Trotter School that was picked out. Um, and we're trying to make that work. So that'll be a good thing. Um, we've had several inquiries on tree participation. Yeah?
Yeah, I just be careful with the, um, where in the Trotter School. Because I think some of the, I know there's one tree there, a green tree, they've had to replace a couple of times. I don't know if it has to do with the salt that keeps getting plowed and everything. So just be mindful, you need to have it probably away from the, the driveways and the parking lot sufficiently.
We'll use a salt tolerant tree.
Yeah, or something like that.
Yeah.
Um, I just hate for you put it in and have to keep having it replaced.
Okay, good. Thank you.
The location, uh, of the tree, for the tree, the new tree, was, um, narrowed down. Uh, we went over that with, um, Crystal Lavoie, the principal, and, um, a couple of sites were selected. And I think, um, the one that we picked, uh, is what you just basically said. I think it's about thirteen feet from the pavement, uh, in a field. So hopefully it'll be okay. Next step is to have the arborist, the, uh, the developers' arborist come and, um, you know, say it's a good site, which it seems to be. And also to recommend, uh, a tree that would work in that site.
All right. Um, in your packet, we have a draft schedule of meetings for next year. I was hoping you just look at it for the next meeting. Um, if you have any questions or changes, and then, um, we can get it on board for October twenty-first. So we, I can book the rooms, the room for those meetings. So that's just for FYI.
I see there's one here for, um, February tenth. And, um, I think that, that Monday might be, uh, a week after the Sunday Super Bowl, but, um, that should be something that's checked. That we're not meeting the Monday after the Patriots win the next Super Bowl.
You mean after they win the Patriots Invitational?
You'll notice on the second page, there's a year calendar, which has the school vacations blocked out and the holidays. So we'll have to look up when that Super Bowl is, so, if they even have that yet. So that's, um, for you to look at. Last year, we purchased a plotter with planning board budget for downstairs to replace the old one. And, um, I T. had asked for planning board to pick up the cost of the annual maintenance fee of six hundred dollars per year. And, um, I talked to Mark Purple and said that, you know, it's a shared product and we did purchase it. So I think that it shouldn't just be on planning board budget. Um, but the I T. didn't have, um, it in their budget for this year. So he had, Mark Purple suggested ma- we pay for it this year and that would be incorporated into the I T.'s budget going forward for, um, the six hundred dollar a year maintenance fee. And I thought that was a good idea, but I said I would, um, discuss it with the board because it's planning board budget. Um, so if you're amenable to that, I will pay the maintenance fee for this year. Um, and it is worth it because if something goes wrong, um, to replace it is much more expensive.
I'm good with that.
Just a quick question. So is there an opportunity cost? Like, are we missing out on something because we're paying a maintenance fee on something that's universally shared? Like, are you, um, prohibited from doing something else with that money? Or is that money not otherwise accounted for?
Well, uh.
All of the money is accounted for. There's a plan for every penny in our budget when we submit it to the town meeting. There's a plan for that. You'll notice that we heard that the I T. people didn't have it in their budget, so they want us to pay for it. Did we have it in our budget?
That's.
No.
We did not.
But, but thanks to the, uh, management skills of our town planner, we're able to, uh, move things around and try to, uh, work and be good teammates.
Yes. So I just wanted general consensus that it was all right to cover it with this budget. And then going forward for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, it will, I'll make sure that it goes to where it should be going. Okay. We still have legal opinion request into town council regarding site plan review committee, uh, and the conflict with, um, non-residents voting. I spoke with, um, uh, town council yesterday, who said he is working on that. So he did respond with several other, um, requests that I had regarding the projects. Um, we're still doing research on the gazebo at Saint Marks. Ultimately, it's up to them if they're going to not want it anymore on their property. But I did pass it on to Mark Purple and, um, I also spoke with Rob Kukelitz from Saint Marks, who said, um, you know, they wanna work with the town to, if they don't want it there anymore, they will let us know and then work out of where to put it someplace. And the suggestion was at, uh, the Neri School, where they do have events already and they have to put in, uh, a platform out there right now and then take the platform down. So that was a suggestion from a couple of people. Um, Park Central is, um, continued at the Conservation Commission still, so there's nothing further there. Uh, Main Street Reconstruction, you can see they're putting the drainage pipes in on, at, near the intersection. Um, just a reminder that Public Safety has a ribbon cutting on October twenty-sixth. Um, and they'll, um, please note that on the next agenda, we're going to be talking about the five G small cell policy that was drafted by, um, council working with Mark Purple. Um, so that's on the Dropbox. And if you take a look at it, then we can have a discussion about it. This policy and then there's articles from Heidi Davis, who's a resident, who's, um, pushing for a policy to protect the town.
You all set, Karina?
I am, sorry.
So, no, I had a couple of things. So one, I think, uh, Dorian talked to you about the Shopsey needing a new housing authority plan? Is that what it was?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. That's also the Housing Production Plan.
Yeah, and, um, requested, she, uh, brought up at our last CPC meeting if we could use admin funds from CPC to pay for it. Um, in the past, the answer was no. I haven't heard back from, uh, the, uh, Community Preservation Coalition yet to confirm that we still can't pay that. But, um, and if we, even if we could, it would eat up our entire, um, admin funds.
Mm-hmm.
So it's very unlikely that that's.
So it's not looking good for CPC funds.
No, and, uh, my understanding is that has to be done within the next, or within this fiscal year. So I just wanted to bring that up. Um, so I think the next request was gonna come to the planning board. Um, looking to pay for that.
Actually, it's going to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So, um, in two thousand fourteen, when Jennifer Bernie was here, uh, and the Housing Production Plan was created or updated then, um, what happened is that, uh, Shopsey voted to recommend that a request get put into, uh, Affordable Housing Trust, who manages funds for affordable housing projects. And, um, we're gonna do that. We're gonna put in a letter and ask because there's some money available there. And Shopsey voted to recommend, um, I do that up to, I'm sorry, I got a hair in my eye, up to and not exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. Previously, um, five years ago, it was fifteen thousand dollars, but they wanted to make sure we didn't have to go back twice. So that, um, Housing Production Plan expires March first of two thousand twenty. So, um, what I'm hoping to do is this week have a chance to draft a letter to Affordable Housing Trust so that at the, um, Board of Selectmen meeting that's coming up soon, they can have a, a trust fund meeting prior to that. Because they're mostly the same, um, board members on both boards. And if they approve that, then I'm going to, um, solicit proposals three to five, um, from three to five companies. And, um, hopefully we get one who's interested to do it within the budget we can. Um, so we wanna get someone who's qualified and also, you know, does it at a reasonable fee. And then once that happens, the Board of Selectmen will award the contract that would be paid for by Affordable Housing. So there's a lot of tasks there, but I got a, a plan of action. We'll just take one step at a time. And we're at the step where we're gonna send a letter to Affordable Housing Trust to ask if they will, um, dedicate funds for that.
So then, um, another thing, item, uh, separate, is the Granite Company on Route nine. That's, uh, just west of, um, New England Center for Children. Uh, it's now called the Granite Guy. Um, I don't know if it's changed hands, was it Sylvia's or something before? Um, I know it's come before the board before about storage outside and big slabs of granite and whatnot out there. I know they're out there again. I think they were spoken to about you can't have store your product out in front of the building. Um, and there also seems to be now a new stone or slate, uh, fire pit or grill out there. I don't know if that was ever approved for that location. So I don't, uh, you know, keeping in line with, um, you know, what we did at the old White's Corner. Just wanna make sure they're, um, in line with the, the approved site plan for that location. Um, so I don't know if you can ask someone to go down and take a peek at that?
That would be me.
And the, the only other piece too is, uh, the Ken's, uh, the Ken's Building. I drove by it last night and I noticed that the sign, um, they told us that it was gonna be, you know, blue during the day and white at night. I don't know what happened, but it looks like it's white all the time. Um, you can see all the lights coming through it. I don't know if they said they were changing it up or what, but.
No, it was blue before, uh, uh, cause like two weeks ago I was driving by and I said, look, I was showing my husband, look at the nice blue sign. And I was telling him at night it turns white. I drove by later and it, on an evening coming home, and it was white. So they must be having a malfunction with the lights.
I don't think it's with the lights. I think the whole blue facade is off.
Oh, it came off. Maybe they're fixing it. Uh, we'll have to check that.
No, because it was white last night, so all the lights were working behind it.
Yeah.
So, and it definitely looked different.
Okay.
You could see like little white bulbs. So maybe just reach out and say what's going on with that.
Issue, okay. White at night.
The white all the time.
Right, uh, white all the time.
It's white all the time.
Oh, yeah, white during the day.
No, it was supposed to be blue during the day.
No, but the problem is it's white at the daytime. Right. Issue, okay. Also, quick question, if a stone wall, um, on a scenic road is on the property line, partially on town right of way and partially on the private property, is the precedence that it comes to, um, permit approval for the planning board? I, I have information that it does, but I wanted to confirm.
I think you're right, but it seems like lately the precedence is that the people do, just do whatever they want.
Okay, we'll be getting some applications shortly on that.
Good.
Okay. And then a likely accessory apartment will be coming across the table too, maybe at the next meeting, depending on what happens. I think that's it.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve the minutes from August twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen as written.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion?
Yes. Um, line eighty-five, Ms. Latrell noted the flag placement is allowed. I just, on the twenty-sixth. Um, the discussion was on lighting and exemptive lighting, so I ju-
Are you on August twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, tell me the line again.
Eighty-five?
Sorry, I was on the wrong one.
I just take all that flag stuff out instead of explaining what I said.
We're at line, from starting at Ms. Latrell?
Yeah.
At the upward nine lays moisture, and then leave Mr. Bemis in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other items? All in favor? Five to zero.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve the meeting notes from Monday, September ninth, two thousand nineteen as written.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion?
I'm gonna abstain. I was absent.
All in favor? Four to zero to zero, four to zero to one.
Who seconded that?
Mimi.
Mimi, okay. And Jesse abstained.
I know. Seriously, I already had Ms. Purple.
Just a reminder, on October twenty-first, two thousand nineteen is our next meeting. Motion adjourned.
We have, uh, Tim, did you wanna say something?
Just, since, since you mentioned the Public Safety Building, um, I thought I'd mention that, it came up in an ADA meeting and then at a Public Safety, uh, Building Committee meeting, that there was a miss in all the reviews that everyone did, that there is no direct pedestrian access to that building. So no child or no person who doesn't drive can actually get to the building. So it's just something as, you know, as you look at future things, you might wanna keep in mind that not everyone drives. The issue is being worked, but would've been a whole, whole lot better if we, if it had been caught early.
Any other comments from the public? Mr. Mills?
I think the motion was made and seconded already.
Any discussion hearing that all in favor? We're adjourned.